All ready? Okay. We're going to open it up to the Committee on Infrastructure and Public Lands. I'm the Chair Lou DeMambro, Counselor Donale Mercer Bruin, Counselor Charles Viola, Counselor Robert Ferrulo, and Counselor Willan Pupolato. Also part of the committee, first up.
Motion to waive the reading in a minute and a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. First on the agenda, we have order authorizing mayor to grant a deed, by deed, Lot A on Forest Park Circle to Judith A. Bellastriari. Attorney Suvati?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Have the floor.
This one and the next one to Mr. Booker were brought to my attention by the assessors' office because if you look on, does everybody have the plan? You look on the plan, you see that right away, the first block circle was moved and there was a strip of land on each piece here. Actually, on this one, it's highlighted. So this is just to correct an error that should have been done 16, 28 years ago. They've been paying taxes on this property all this time and it's just a particular problem. Any questions I'd be glad to answer.
Do we all miss the Booker name?
No.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Any other questions on this matter? Okay, I'll let the committee let it proceed. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that the order be adopted.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
That motion passes. Next on the agenda, the order authorizing mayor to grant by deed Lot B on Forest Park Circle to William and Lisa Booker. Second. All in favor? Next, order authorizing mayor to grant by easement a five-foot strip of land known as 38 Central Street to Brian P. Noonan and Amanda M. Noonan.
Again, this is my filing. So this is the Central Street proposed plan. Mr. Noonan has been enjoying the ability to pass over the city land for many years. If we put the lot where we should be able to put the lot on the fence, we're going to put the fence, so it cuts driveway right now and cover it completely itself. So we talked about what he might have, one was putting the driveway on the other side. It would have been expensive and it would have been right at the bus stop. So we came to an agreement whereby he only needs about five feet rather than what he has now, which is about 15. So we're offering to grant an easement to him for the five feet for his driveway so that he can get in and out of his house. That's only got to run from Central Street to the back of the house.
I have a lot map and if any of you would like to take a look at it.
I just have a quick one.
Counselor Mercer Bruin?
They're not here, but they were the ones that spoke in favor of the fire station.
Okay. So this is just for people who are listening at home to connect the dots. This is the agreement that we talked about attaching as part of the special permit the other night for the fire station. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'm not on the committee, but if I could.
Make a motion to open the conversation to other members.
All in favor?
Aye.
Just a quick question. So how many years has he been there?
He's only been there maybe five, but he bought it from the Gibbons', but for, well, since I was a baby.
Yeah.
A long time.
So really?
Sixty percent.
No, no, because obviously if it was one owner and he hadn't bought it, right, I mean, after 25 years, he really couldn't.
You can actually tack on to the other owner, to be honest with you, so he could have made that claim.
Okay, but he was willing to do it without any issues?
The thing about that that would have forced him not to be able to make that claim is that he had permission. Everest possessions without permission.
Okay.
So they've had permission all the years from the buyer department to cross that land.
Yeah, okay, great. All right, good. That was it. Thank you.
Any other further questions? I'll let the committee let it proceed.
Make a motion, the order be adopted.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes.
Thank you.
All in favor? We are adjourned at 6:05.
No, that's going to go last. Oh, okay.
Why don't you get jetted? Put a digital with military, they're real, Michelle.
Hi.
How are you? Good to see you.
Same here.
I call the Committee on Personnel to order. On the committee is Counselor DeMers and Counselor Toro and myself, Counselor Campbell as Chair. Do we have?
I'll make a motion that we dispense with the reading of the previous meeting's minutes. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Great. We have the reappointment. Sorry, these glasses are not, must not have been the correct strength I picked up. Reappointment of Mark R. Cavici to the Woburn, Cavicki, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
To the Woburn Board of Appeals. Hello, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening. How are you?
Good. How are you?
I'm doing well. This is a reappointment. Mark has been the alternate to the Woburn Board of Appeals for several years now. He's been doing a great job, expressed an interest in being reappointed, as is the custom. We compelled him to be here this evening because it's a reappointment, but I would highly recommend Mark for reappointing as being doing a great job.
Any questions?
Just a comment.
Yes.
It's not easy. That's the Board of Appeals does some really difficult work that involves the letter of the law, so I commend him for continuing to want to do the work.
Yes, Bill.
I know Mark will do a great job with whatever he's doing, I'm sure. Why is there alternates on that board versus other boards? Or maybe they exist everywhere else, I don't know. Seems like an odd thing to me.
I don't think they exist everywhere. I think that's more like a charter or...
Well, it's because you typically need four out of five votes, so it's very difficult to not have an alternate because you always have to get...
So he sits there, he goes through the whole process each time, and if everyone's there, he says nothing?
Right.
And if someone's missing, then he plucks right in. Okay, that's good. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion, we open it up to other members. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No, that's all right. I don't like that rule anyway. I know. Yes. President Dylan.
I've seen Mark in action on the Board of Appeals. Does a great job. Also does a great job of ruling the league. Incredible person. Puts his whole heart and soul into it. Great appointment.
Great. Anyone else? Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to send the reappointment of Mark Cavicki to the Woburn Board of Appeals out of bounds.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. And now we have the appointment of Francesco Alonge Jr.?
Alonge.
Alonge.
Their glass problem again.
I can't, honestly.
It's hard to pronounce.
No. I can't see the name. I mean, this must be a 150 and I'm on 250. The letters are blurring together.
I can relate, Joanne. No worries.
Wait, you know what the problem is? I keep getting around folding.
No. Oh, good. I'll let you know. No, it is me.
Oh, who gave you these? Mark. Maybe you need even bigger glasses. You didn't know that was Mark Suvati beside you.
Thank you. This is my last one, so this is good. To the Woburn Commission of Disability. Yeah. Hello, welcome.
Good evening. Good seeing you. Not up here. It's my pleasure to present Frankie to you. I think he's going to do a great job on the Commission on Disability. He was highly recommended to me by Chairwoman Jan Fuller. She's known Frankie for a long time. I'll let him answer questions, speak for himself. Generally, I'll tell you, he's been at Woburn for 17 years with his wife and family. He works for MassAbility, which is formerly the Massachusetts Rehabilitation Commission, where he manages budgets, oversees payments to vendors that support individuals with disabilities. He's eager to join the commission. He's attended a couple of meetings. He understands the mission, and I believe he has a lot to contribute, so I'm proud to present him to you today.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, welcome. Thank you. So why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself?
So, as he said, I've been in Woburn 17 years and I have several qualities. And growing up, it was my parents and my family always treated me like I was quote-unquote "normal." So, and this is one of the reasons why I want to join the committee and be here and to show my son, like, you know, he's 12 years old, he goes to Woburn School, and show that no matter what you have or what's going on in your life, you just keep trucking and keep doing what you need to do and to be part of the community regardless of your situation.
How wonderful. Thank you. Anyone on the committee? Yes?
I just want to say, Frankie, I'm very excited that you have Mayor Cannon's appointment, and I appreciate it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
This is the exact type of candidate we're looking, somebody new to active involvement in our city government. He has great experience throughout, and I'm glad to hear about that financial piece because we are going to be doing some, hopefully some more looks at our playgrounds and recreational facilities to make sure that they're available for children of all abilities. So that's definitely something that I'm hoping you'll be able to keep an eye on.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
However I can help.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'll make a motion that the appointment of Francesco Alonge Jr. to the Woburn Commission on Disability is sent out out of bounds.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Make a motion to adjourn? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. We're adjourned.
Thank you for coming. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Like to call the Committee on Ordinance, Charter, and Rules to order. On the committee with me, Chairman DeMers, is Counselor Toro, Counselor Mercer Bruin, Counselor Ferrulo, and Counselor DeMambro. Is there a motion to dismiss with the reading of previous meetings?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
The first item on our agenda this evening is the order to amend the Woburn Municipal Code, Section 2-180 relative to non-union salaries. Mr. Mayor?
Evening. This is the kind of a companion piece to the matters that you have in finance, the transfers and the adjustments to salaries of various non-union, non-department heads and non-union department heads. As you know, in Section 2-180 of the municipal code, we list the base salaries. So if the orders, the transfer, are approved for the particular salaries for those parties, this section of the code would be amended to reflect those. So maybe at this point, if you were to put this out back for action, and then when you deal with financial matters, if they're approved, you could deal with the summer floor, but I would leave that to you, your judgment.
Well, I will leave that up to the will of the committee, and I know some of the members on the committee have some questions. Who would like to?
Joining here, like, Audit Attorney and HR Director Keely as well.
Great. Counselor Ferrulo?
I can say two questions, Mr. Mayor. There's two grant-funded positions that are getting ordinance changes. I think it would be more appropriate if they come down with a budget and be addressed at that point rather than being buried in an ordinance change.
Yeah, one of them is the economic development and the substance abuse. Yeah, the reason that the economic development one in particular, now that the audit are way in on this as well, is including the three-year period of time for that position expires next January halfway through the fiscal year. We could, I believe we could probably amend that later, but we just felt it was simpler to do it this way at this time.
There's no money in the city budget for this, except what's funded from the grant. Does the grant cover this increase?
Well, this would come from the salary adjustment account that is in the budget. And then in July, the full budget for FY26 would carry any needed funds and subject to council approval. This is essentially adjusting for the remainder of this fiscal year, and then it would be a budget decision like any other budget decision.
But the job doesn't exist, though, does it?
Economic development?
It's not in the budget.
I will suggest, it technically is in the budget with an offset from the money received from the belt. So technically, it's in the budget right now at a budgetary level, but the offset fully exists, and that's to be all the way to Ferrulo's point. That's from the money received.
So is there a difference, is there a full-time equivalent addition in next year's budget to accommodate this position?
In fiscal '26, there will be half a year because that's when the funding expires. So to that point, when we submit a budget in June for June, if it's not approved to continue, it would stop. It would stop in January.
Yes. So it's subject to the next...
I do intend to include it in a proposed budget, but of course, the council...
But I think the question that Counselor Ferrulo is talking about here is if we approve an ordinance with that salary rate, we're in an essence approving that position to be fully funded in the budget.
This is subject to your ending...
So this is subject...
So if this does not get carried in the FY26 budget?
But the concern of the committee is why would we have it in there and then have to make it our responsibility to pull it out after?
I'll say from my perspective, we originally included it because we tried to be more transparent what all of the non-union positions, before we only really looked at it. And I think you see the scope of what's there, it's a whole different than what we usually do. A lot of these things, by default, just adjust in the budget by the course anyways in past, but this year puts all of the positions that are currently under the non-union, by the non-union...
Through the chair, I've never seen in all my years it all mixed up like this.
That's my, no, that's my point. I would say we added more this year because there are positions, I removed the one you're talking about, but there are a lot of other positions that are actually continuously in the budget that we have to, should address in your salary by ordinance.
Counselor Ferrulo? Any other follow-up?
What have you all run?
Yep, sure. Counselor Mercer Bruin?
I agree. I don't think we should be doing this now. I think we have experience with that from the last budget. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't support that, not that particular position anyway. And I don't know, maybe this is out of our purview, but wouldn't that position at some point be advertised when it, you know, became part of the full city budget and not, or no? I mean, I'm not an expert on those things. I just want to make sure.
I prefer to age out.
Sure.
I believe the person was offered, was offered the job based on the funding that was available in order to be their job, and the city did...
If the city did decide to keep it, it would be their job. That was part of the, okay, okay.
Yeah, she's on a contract for the funding that was received and it expires in January of '26.
Okay. And she understands that if the city doesn't fund it, there is no job. Okay. Thank you, thank you. But having said that, I wouldn't support moving forward with it when it's not actually a real job yet, so...
I think the substance abuse coordinator is in the ordinance and is funded by the OPIO settlement. It's already in...
That's a carryover from Ricky Jolly's job.
Okay, so it's a completely different situation. Yeah, okay.
So I would bring any comments on that.
Okay. Is it a different situation, Donna? Through the chair?
Sorry, I wouldn't consider it different. It's a different grant, but it's paid by the OPIO settlement, so it's not funded by the, by the regular budget. It's similar to the, it's an offset.
Okay.
Economic development position, and that position's been in the ordinance for the past few years. It's not filled, we haven't filled it since Mr. Jolly was in the position, but it recently was filled this past...
It was advertised through the normal process, and this person was selected.
So Chairman, help me understand. It sounds like it's not the same situation, but I could, I think the nuances...
Personally, I think an offset's an offset. Whether it's a substance abuse coordinator or an economic development manager, an offset's an offset.
An offset, okay.
So without, without the funds that we're drawing on to fund that position, the funding does not exist unless it's tapped into the salary adjustment account that preexists in the budget. There is no, there is no position funding for that unless it's decided by the mayor.
Understood.
Any other questions?
And to clarify, I do intend to carry both of these positions in the FY26 budget until your review and approval. And the economic development position, as Charlie indicated, the funding does expire in January, so it will be half a year's city-budgeted position.
Counselor Toro?
Looking at this real quick, it says this section shall be effective generally July 1st, 2024. So if these were approved, these would be retroactive back to...
Yes. That is traditionally how we handle this, yes.
And to be clear, again, this being the first time I've seen something like this, is this, when it says the base salary of Superintendent of Public Works being amended to 168, is that your way of just addressing a traditional COLA increase from year over year? Or these, are any of these, none of these are contractual because these are all non-union?
Right. So if you, if you look at Section 2-184 of the municipal code, and there's it, miscellaneous salary restrictions for non-union full-time employees. Section C deals with all non-union employees, including full and part-time, except department heads, elected officials, appointed members. In other words, non-union, non-department people. They shall be entitled to the same rate of increase as is negotiated in the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Woburn and the SEIU Local 888, the City Hall Union, and the increase shall take effect on July 1st of each fiscal year. That's the ordinance that governs this, not to be callous, but this bucket of people, non-union, non-department head employees. They are entitled to the same rate of increase as the CBA with SEIU 888. So we're treating the non-union department heads exactly the way we did with the others.
Non-union, non-department.
Non-union, non-department. D is the non-union department heads.
So is there, is there, you know, these salaries that are amended, is there a set 3%, 4%, 2.5% that each of these positions are being bumped? Or did you, do you go position by position to make the determination?
So in following the SEIU 888, for this particular, we looked at the same rate of increase that that group got. There were some adjustments to base salaries, and then there were the consistent COLA that the group earned.
Yeah, and steps.
And steps, please.
Yeah, so we, with SEIU City Hall, the non-union, non-department heads, we created a step system this year. It's the first time the city's had a step system in that, in that union. So they created a step system. It's two per step in each step, and there's five steps in the step system. They'll go off a step every other year. And the way that this union's agreement came to be was that it was based off a year's service to determine what step you started on. So if you were here for less than, you were here for less than nine years, you started on step two. Nobody started step one unless you were a new hire after July 1 of '24. So all new hires will come in at step one, and then anybody that had been here for less than nine years started at step two. Anyone over 10 years started at step three. Over 15 years was step four. 20 years was step five, and they've always had a senior step so that you are a half percent higher once you fit 20 years. So that's why you'll see different increases based off of a year's service. For instance, like the water treatment plant operator, he's been here for over 20 years, so his increase looks a little bit higher because he's been, he qualified beyond status senior. Everybody else started at step two, and then the COLA except for two other members that have been here for over nine years, so they're at step three. So that's the non-union, non-department heads, and that's the first step system that's been associated that year.
So that's Section 2-184C.
Yep.
It only prescribes how certain people could be dealt with, and that is to follow the collective bargaining agreement that was negotiated with SEIU 888. The second bucket is the department heads, Section D, which says the city councils shall by the second meeting in March determine the rate of increase, if any, of the non-union department head salaries. And obviously doesn't preclude the council's revenue salaries at other times during the year, so... So back up to your finance matter in committee, item three, that's the amount of money that would be transferred from the salary adjustment account to cover both buckets of Section C and Section D, non-union employees, non-union, non-department head and non-union department head.
Do we have a, do we have what that number is going to be every year of this projection?
Yeah. You can say it for all of us.
Yeah, we just have the base salaries, and we have the transfer for 129,190.23 for finance for the FY25. I'm concerned about what's it going to look like for an increase in FY26, FY27, and FY28.
We conated those numbers. The issue being is that these do follow suit to what the settlement was for both teams this, and this year. So I'm supplied with that information tomorrow, but I'm saying it's, we accept the fact that we're going to follow both of those union settlements.
Understood. I'm not, I'm not arguing that we're going to be in for me. I'm not arguing that we're going to not follow them because I think that, you know, if the state does that, you either do the following of whatever union gets in terms of the percentage, they don't have steps, which is why I'm a little leery about the steps being also included. But then also, there's also the option for a merit program in the state. There's two different, two different ways of determining raises for different types of classifications of employees. So I would at least like to see with this ordinance, if we're putting into our ordinance, what year two, year three, year four of this proposal will be actually impacting...
The full cost of it, what, what our...
Yeah, so if we have the transfer that would cover the cost of this year, I think we should have a number for FY26, FY27, and FY28.
I'll make that in the form of a motion that we receive that.
Just on that, on that motion, the 28 would only be there four years back, which would only be...
Understood. Understood. Is there a second? Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
No.
Second.
I had a quick question.
We'll go right to you.
Okay.
After we make that...
No worries. Okay, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now opened up to non-voting members, but Counselor Mercer Bruin, before we open up to you.
Thank you. Just a quick question. None of these salaries or increases are in people's checks now, right? Because we haven't voted on anything, so I wouldn't imagine they would be paid out, right?
Best practices, if that's in the salary adjustment line item, we actually made the movement before, I mean, before we get approval for the budget. Because we don't need approval. Approvals are given down on the salary adjustment line item. So, but any adjustment that you guys request would obviously be reflected back into it.
So the answer to my question is yes.
Yes.
People are getting this money, even though we haven't done this yet.
And that's because this is a transfer from an appropriated account to another appropriated account. The money is there.
Okay. So say we say no. Say we say no.
Yep.
Sorry, I meant to cut you. Then it just, then you take it out of people's paychecks?
Sure.
Okay. I just, I'm a little, yeah. Okay. I, I just, I'm a little, yeah, okay.
Well, my own editorial comment, best practice doesn't make it a good practice.
Right.
If it was a best practice, then I'd agree with you on that statement in terms of the qualification of what we're talking about here, but it's just a little.
It should be noted that this is not.
Understood, Mr. Mayor, but we've all had constituents ask us where these big raises are coming from. And then to find out that they're being appropriated already while we're having this meeting. I don't know, I don't, I don't think many of them would be too fond of it, even if it was a previous practice.
The answer to where the proposed raises are coming from is in the ordinance, 2184, section C and section D. These are ordinances that have been on the books for many, many years. C prescribed very plainly what should happen with that bucket of employees. They follow the same rate of increase as has been negotiated. That is what it is. The second, D pertaining to the non-union department heads, puts it on the council by the second meeting in March to determine the rate of increase, if any, of the non-union department head salaries. That is in front of you for your action, as it has been many times in the past. We have proposed what we believe to be reasonable numbers in line with the practice of following Teamsters. But again, that is something the council can weigh in on certainly.
Counselor Torre.
Do we know how much money is in the salary adjustment account?
How much is left after this?
Uh, I guess before and after, I think.
We roughly had about the $9,000. We mostly took them down, all of this. Plus, we, we did, um, the SEIU, Teamsters, Library, and DBW. And now with this, and plus, we have been chief of fire and a deputy, all going to be able to be accounted for on what we had already appropriated for the salary adjustment account. Recently, we received a fire department's adjustment, which was not. And that's why we had to go for free disapprobation on that to cover it, because it was now previously.
And is there a union contract still pending?
Because right now, we, we're in the final process of doing the superior police and getting that number to you. And after that, there will be one open rule.
Okay, and with regards to the salary adjustment account appropriated in the current budget, we're doing all right with that number right now?
For now, yes.
So you don't, we don't foresee coming real tight to it?
No, when the patrolman's contract is settled, I expect we'll be coming back for a transfer.
In, in full disclosure, previously, when we had done what the salary adjustment line item should be in the budget, we were all doing off a historic balance.
Sure.
So it was, it was never fully by itself, everybody. But it was out there enough to get it through yet, hopefully, several years.
I understand.
And I think if one thing we will see is, is come up in the budget, when we settle this, as we have historically, anytime you give a base salary increase by a company deputy, that does mean you're overtime and holiday pay simply by that four dollars. You want to check, historic?
No, to your question, we're actually at a point now where we have six of seven contracts settled in the first five, six months of the fiscal year. That's actually a good, a good thing. One more outstanding, which would like to get done, continue to work on that.
Any other questions from council? Counselor, the member?
Is there a way to try to get these numbers in line before you come down? For the increases? I don't know if I'm wording that right.
I don't either.
So before, before the, before the salaries are issued out, is there a way to bring that back so that this type of information is voted on prior to the issuance of the increases and the retros and all of that?
Is there a way?
Yeah, just to change the ordinance, correct?
Maybe I didn't understand your question.
Counselor, the member has a question, you see what I'm saying? This committee has read at any time to change this ordinance.
Yes.
And it's, it's purposely done this way to, one, codify the salaries, but two, constantly fluctuate because of these folks' positions within the city being very different than the others. Is it not guaranteed by that?
But we're not held, we're not bound by like the unions or whatever to do it this way. No, I think paragraph C, when you're dealing with the non-union, non-department heads, if you didn't want to follow the way the union contracts are settled, I think you'd probably have to adjust this ordinance.
Adjust that.
And then paragraph D.
Because I'm just trying to distinguish between union and the non-union.
Yeah, that's what C and D.
C and D.
They're treated differently.
Okay.
It's like they're addressed by ordinance, so they can be, the ordinances can be revisited.
Yeah, we can revisit it, sure.
Okay. Questions? Comments? And then back to Counselor Mr. Brown?
Yeah. On the substance misuse director, McKenzie's position, kind of, if I understand it correctly, different than all the others. Because that was a grant through the OPIAD settlement that has to be held in a separate account that can only be used for that one particular item, correct?
It's for salary and the operations.
Right, but it doesn't go in the general fund, it doesn't go in the general bucket. But that's, I wanted to clarify that for the public. And, and that's well-funded, and we look at, if I keep up on it, we're getting more money as well.
The funding we receive is more than adequate for fund her position and has to allow her to expand her operations in most circumstances.
And possibly more coming than what a.
Well, it's a multiple year settlement.
And it's stretched out seven or eight years. I just wanted to clarify, it's kind of different than all the others.
It is.
Yeah, it sounds.
Just to, just to point a clarification to your point, President Dillon, I think it was July of '23, maybe? We had to designate a specific account within the city code to accept those funds.
That's good.
Thank you. Counselor Mr. Brown?
Again, I, I thank President Dillon for bringing that up because I was still kind of lumping that in with the economic development manager, which to me is very clearly not the thing. Yeah, okay. Well, there's some other things in here as, as well. I don't know, are we going to do the deep dive, go through each one? Or what's the, I, I mean.
So the process that I think.
I have some concerns about some of them that I see here.
As Chair, I think if there were any amendments or changes to the ordinance that any of the members would like to make, I would advise that we get through all the other members that may want to speak. We return to the regular order. And then if there's any proposed changes, it should be individually done by a motion and then by roll call so that Clark Vincent can record it properly.
Follow up to that, Mr. Chair. We had asked for some information from our auditor. I assume we should probably wait for that information before we do anything.
Well, I think the idea that, I mean, something needs to be decided on this measure because this is the timeframe with which council should be reviewing this.
Should be reviewing it, where we allotted enough time to get this information to actually deliberate.
I mean, I'm personally, I'm not prepared to vote this evening.
Good, well, I guess that's my point.
Without the information.
Yeah, that, that was the point I was trying to make.
But any, any type of amendments that'll be happening this evening based on any types of proposed motions would also impact that math as well. So we would want to do that tonight so that we would have that correct data when we make a decision back at, at a city council.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Counselor Papalata.
There's just a couple of things that just feel a little uncomfortable that we walked through. One is paying out before it gets approved through this group. And I know there's some logistics that we have to get through. And then the other end is, these positions are needed. There's no doubt we need, you know, the drug, what's that?
That's what you said.
And the, the other position, the KC position that's in there. We definitely need those and those should be funded. But I don't feel like it should be happening outside the budget cycle. It should be part of that cycle, in my opinion. Again, I don't know how the logistics of that happen, but those two things just feel a little bit off to me.
Yeah, they're handled in the budget cycle, but because they are non-union, non-department heads, they are covered by this ordinance. So if we want to amend the ordinance to exclude other types of positions, so they shouldn't be included in C.
That's a way to go out.
I mean, bear in mind, what we're doing here, we're, we're sending down for the council review matters that are in accordance with section C and section D. We're beginning the discussion. We're following the ordinance. There's two buckets of people, we're proposing them to you. Section C says that they shall be entitled to the same rate of increase as was negotiated. We think we know what that means.
Yeah.
That's what we put.
I'm not questioning the increases or any of that.
No, I'm saying if, if we don't want to include those two particular positions that are causing some angst.
Yeah.
Then they shouldn't be.
We could eliminate them out of that pocket.
I think you have to. Otherwise, I think we have to deal with them the way we're trying to deal with them now. So we're just following the ordinance.
All right, all right. I mean, they're needed positions, I'd support them every time, but it just feels, the cots happening before the horse to me.
That's, that's what I was kind of, that is according to the ordinance, it's the ordinance.
Counselor Viall.
Thank you. Couple of follow-ups on the order under number 12. It says, city solicitor title, secretary paralegal, be amended to administrative assistant. What's the amount difference between those two positions?
No, it's a topic.
It's about 45. It's about roughly.
If you're taking total budget questions.
And the same thing goes for human resources assistant to be amended to benefits coordinator.
Yeah, so that's about an $8,000 increase to that salary. And if we had captured as administrative assistant, it would have been about a 2500.
And that goes to the justification for those two positions. And you have the two parties here who recommended those adjustments. The city solicitor, the human resources director, they can speak to those if necessary.
Counselor, Mr. Brown?
I'd like to hear about those jumps, if I could. Difference in work, difference in work?
Sure.
Difference in.
Lisa Morelli is my assistant. She's, uh, covers me when I'm not there. She can, she's been basically a paralegal for many, many years before she started working at Allen. I think Allen felt she was a paralegal more than a, more than a secretary. She believed in an admin assistant, in my mind. She can do a lot more than, I shouldn't say, than just a secretary can do, but she can do a lot of leading work and a lot of drafting. She handles every contract that comes through the city, every one.
Can I, through the chair, to Attorney Savadi, if we were to advertise this position and she was interviewing for the position, would it require that she be a paralegal?
No.
Okay.
No, an admin assistant doesn't have to be a paralegal.
No, 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 but we're changing her title to paralegal. Does she have that distinction from an educational perspective?
No, not a paralegal.
Right, okay. So my question was, if we were advertising this job and she didn't have it, even though she has all those skills, she wouldn't be allowed to get it?
Counselor, Mr. Brown, it's going from secretary paralegal to administrative assistant.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought we were taking her to a paralegal based on everything you just said that would be.
I was, I was.
Oh. My apologies, I thought you were saying she was performing at the level of a paralegal now, and that's what we wanted to do.
More than a secretary, she's certainly an admin assistant.
I see, okay, thank you very much. And thank you for the clarification, Chairman.
Just a little, you know, the ordinance calls for a deputy city solicitor. And when Mark would go, we had a discussion about whether he, we needed to take action on that position. It's a growing city, most communities have a team in their legal office. And it was Mark's opinion, based on, I think, his conversations with Allen and his own experience, that because we have Teresa, we don't have to take that extra step, which is comforting to me, and I don't want to put words in your mouth.
I'm good on that one.
Shawna, how does this move our, these positions in, in terms of surrounding communities? Has there been any study with regards to where this brings us up to par, or are we still behind?
Yeah, so we did a pain study back in 2023 for all department head positions and non-union staff. And the data, you know, a lot of the, most of the adjustments that you see tonight are reflected from the data that we have. And that data was, you know, is now over a year and a half, two years old at this point. So we, I'm confident that most of the adjustments that we have made are bringing those positions up to par, average not, we're definitely not above average. I would say, if any of these positions were to become vacant with these current salaries, we'd be at least competitive in finding replacements. But, you know, the, the data's there for all the positions that shows why some of these, there's some adjustments, you know. Like the mayor said, we're following the contractual Teamsters and SEIU depending on the title of the council.
Any other questions or comments, Counselor Viall?
Just a follow-up on the economic development manager. Was that the position that was paid out by the WRA?
Yes, you saved that money and probably within the.
So that money now will be completely used up?
We only have to get it to, we have to set within next year.
Thank you.
I just had a follow-up question on, for Shawna, through the chair. So the comps, Shawna, do you have that, that the council can see?
Sure, yeah.
That would be great.
I mean, the surveys in 2023 that I think you guys have all had, probably from years ago, but I haven't used it like that.
No, I mean, to justify what we're doing today. Yeah, okay, perfect. If you have, could you, I'll make a motion to accept that as part of the permanent record. Thank you so much, Shawna.
All those in favor?
Aye. Appreciate that.
I think there's enough. If there's not, I can obviously.
Okay, obviously, we're going to need some time to look at it, but I appreciate that we have it. Thank you so much.
Another underlying question I have here, my memory is not serving me well at this point.
Sure.
When we received this in 2023, did the council take action on the recommendations for this ordinance?
No, I don't think there was, there was no formal recommendation at the time the mayor received the data. And.
And place different.
Shawna, the community's listed in somewhere that you used, yeah?
I'm sorry, I can't.
I dropped it, I'll say. Especially Marv, our sister C.
Counselor Mr. Brown?
Thank you very much. So I also have a question about the, let's see, the assistant to the mayor. Who's amazing.
I didn't hear that.
Who is amazing. Who is amazing. But I just have a couple of questions. So the, the hours of operation for the job. Yeah, no, for, for the assistant to the mayor, for the community outreach.
Oh, community outreach?
Yes, sir.
Standard city hall hours, right now, because of the Community Resource Center, Samantha is putting in more additional hours over there. Not getting overtime, basically getting compensative time for any additional hours over there.
Okay, that was my next question about comps. Because, I mean, we all see Samantha, she comes to every single meeting here. She's at every single city council meeting. So I'm trying to understand how that works in terms of the comps, in terms of money for the taxpayers. If someone could explain for me, I'm not sure who that would be. Shawna, thank you very much.
Overall, I mean, we probably, it's really hard to do comparisons for all these types of positions within municipalities. A lot of communities work different hours. Our Samantha salary, in particular, the community outreach, that position is based off of a 32 and a half hour work week. So if you're looking at that salary and you want to find an hourly rate based off of 32 and a half hours, I think we can all sit here and say we know Samantha does more than that. And like the mayor said, anything over that is, at this point, comp time that she, you know, keeps track of and probably doesn't ever use. But hopefully she does use it. She's earning it. So when you look at the survey that you have in front of you, it doesn't include Samantha's position. It didn't exist at the time, in 2023. But the rates that you'll see are, it's based off an hourly rate because a lot of the department heads in other communities are working 35, 37 and a half, 40 hours. You can't just look at the, you know, annual salary and say, well, you know, the HR director in Winchester is making the same amount as me, but maybe they work 40 hours a week and then that's not compared to comparison. So when you really try to look at the data, you're trying to get, you know, the hourly rate. Some communities in investigation, others have citation presentation, licensing, things like that. So it does take a lot of, you know, time to look into each particular position and to determine what the true comp is. And I'm sure, you know, that if you look at this data, there'll be, you know, people that might say that some, that, that it can be looked at differently. But we really look at hourly rate.
And I, and I so appreciate that everybody knows Samantha goes above and beyond. But I, I guess I'm asking, you know, my job is to ask in terms of the taxpayers, right? So I see Samantha comes down to every single meeting, you're here every single time, you're in the city council. I'm just trying to understand, that's a lot of time for you away from. I'm just trying to understand, that's a lot of time for you away from your family, but what is the benefit to the taxpayers, to you being in this meeting, to you being in, sitting at every single city council meeting? That's what I'm trying to understand.
I guess I'd love the mayor to speak to that.
Yeah, so first let me say.
I'm not saying there isn't one, I'm trying to understand what it is. Because we have people who take notes, we have people who capture the minutes.
Thankfully Samantha doesn't put in for every hour that she gives to the city, thankfully.
But legally, she certainly is entitled.
But thankfully she doesn't.
Yeah, but, yeah.
The meetings she does attend, the events that she runs for the city, what is the benefit?
No, 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 I want to be very clear, I'm asking about these meetings, special, you know, the committee meetings and the city council meetings. I'm not asking about all the other things that you do, that's very, that's very clear to me, that's very clear to me.
I don't track those hours, just to be clear. Fifty hours a week I work, don't include those meetings.
I'm not, I'm trying to.
I'm just letting you know that those hours are not going against my.
Yep, I'm trying just to understand because if there isn't a reason that you should have to be away from your family to be at this meeting, I'm trying to understand what it is.
I'm not making her be.
No, okay, so, but help me understand.
I think, I don't want to speak for her, but I think Samantha feels that the more she's involved in what's happening in the city, the better she can help me in outreach and communications, which is the second half of her job.
Okay.
As I said, thankfully she does not put in for every hour. Oftentimes she comes to a meeting like this just to understand better what's happening.
Okay, so comp time isn't being put in for these meetings specifically, the council meetings?
It is not, if I counted all the hours I have, and I'm not exaggerating, but four months of comp time, that will never be.
Okay, and I hope you understand, this is as uncomfortable for me to ask these questions as it is for everybody else in this room, but it's part of our job, so.
I'm not uncomfortable at all, I feel very confident in what we do.
Okay, so to the comps, so what happens is for the comp, you collect vacation time, yes? Is that what the comp is?
No.
Or is it additional salary?
No, just, we're looking at salaries in this study, I mean.
Time off?
Uh, hourly rate, that is really what we look at.
Comp time.
No, comp time, Shawna.
Comp time, sorry. So yeah, for comp time, it'd be, she, you know, for, she works over thirty-two and a half hours, she should be putting in, per each, she should have a spreadsheet that states how many hours she, you know, worked at the Community Resource Center and then hopefully be able to take time off from using that time.
Would she, would this position, whether it be Samantha or not, be able to take time off from her regular job as the mayor's assistant or running the community center, take time off during that time, yes, of course? That makes sense, yeah.
Vacation time as well.
Yes, okay, okay, thank you.
There are other entities within city government that.
That do the same.
Get comped.
Absolutely, okay, okay. That's all, that's all I have for that, thank you.
President Dillon and Counselor Campbell.
Yeah, I may be able to answer, and I don't want to put words in Samantha's voice here, but myself, many of the other counselors go to the Board of Appeals meeting, we go to the Licensing Commission meeting. There's no requirement as city counselors that we need to go there. I know I do it because I feel like every time I go to one of these meetings, it makes me a better city counselor, it educates me. At my age, I like to keep the brain going, keep me stimulated. I'm thinking there's something for that reason why you go as a citizen, just to further your knowledge and know what's going on.
And through, yeah, through the chair, I asked the question because my constituents are asking me the question. So I hear what you're saying and I appreciate the candor, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, so certainly that is part of it, also being accessible is part of it, right? My job is communication, my job is to understand, so if I don't come to the meetings, I've got to watch them later, right? So that I can understand what was discussed and what people respond and build EFATs and proactively communicate things. And so whether I watch it at home in my pajamas or I come to the meeting, I'd rather come in person and see the audience, but I, to do communications, I have to participate and see those things, so. But I, then hours worked are not reflected in the comp.
I hear you, I hear you, thank you Samantha and thank you for everything you do. No, thank you, again, I don't like to ask those questions, but it's literally my job to ask those questions, so thank you.
If you don't mind, anybody can ask those questions, but I'm happy to.
It's still, in a setting like this, it's still difficult to be.
Yeah, it is, it is, I mean, you all are serving the public.
I think we can all agree that that's the.
Everybody here is serving the public, yet your, all your money is just out here for the world to see, so. But it's still difficult, so I appreciate it, I appreciate it.
Counselor Campbell?
I'm good.
Counselor Viola too, that's online.
Okay, saying that, this is going to be a little uncomfortable too, I would say, but I know a lot of people, obviously, on this list and any of the heads, they work well beyond thirty-two and a half hours and they don't get comp time even though they're supposed to. It's just they're too busy and they have too much to do. So I have to say that I am glad that she's not getting overtime pay, I know that sounds terrible. I'd rather you get the comp time because there are, all, the majority of these people are working forty, forty-five, fifty. Lindsay, when it comes to elections, she's working well beyond that and she can't possibly take all the comp time because she would never be in the office. So she has to keep working and I think that even though technically they, it's considered thirty-two and a half hours, these heads are really salary.
Much more, yeah.
You know, really salary, so I just wanted to say that and so in a sense, I'm glad you brought that up because I, you might want the money, but I'm glad fiscally for the city that we're not paying those additional hours for the work that so many of the dedicated heads are actually putting in so that the city will work well. Yeah, and that was really my only comment on that, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, are there any non, like COLA or STEP increase related adjustments to the salaries in the first year of any of the employees in the ordinance?
Say the first part again.
So I understand how we have the provision in our municipal code where the COLA that's decided for certain unions and the STEP increases now that have been added. Has there been any move in terms of an additional bump, I guess, on the original salary? Because I'm looking at the previous municipal code and I'm seeing that there's some that are, you know, within two, three thousand of each other and then there's others with significant increases.
Yeah, so again, remember the two buckets, there's the non-union, non-department heads. And per the section C, they're entitled to the same rate of increase as negotiated in the collective bargaining agreements. And some of the collective bargaining agreements included adjustments.
I'm catching myself now, Mr. Mayor, because it was mentioned that if they are entitled to that higher step, that we would have seen the bigger jump. I caught myself, thank you.
Yeah, so that's the non-union, non-department heads.
Yeah, there's too many buckets going around.
There's a lot of buckets.
There are a lot of buckets. The non-union, non-department heads outside of following the STEP and COLA, those would have been the change to the secretary, paralegal and the city solicitor's office and the HR administrative assistant to benefits manager in the HR office.
And again, this is just.
Those are adjustments.
Those questions were only aimed at the fact that I'm gonna have to explain this to people.
Yeah, and then for the department heads, there were, there are adjustments, there was four adjustments. And then everybody else followed the cost of living adjustments and the STEP system.
Do we have a, do we have a history of when the last time this was addressed, formal, within the municipal code?
Sorry, I'm not, I was here on my personal capacity, but last time it was effective July 1st, 2023. It follows the Teamsters, most of them with the department heads follow the Teamsters, so once those were adjusted, it must have been the same contract.
That's the second piece of this, C is SEIU, V is essentially Teamsters, that's who they follow.
It's been piecemeal too, but the last big ones, the ones that are related to the Teamsters, were effective July 1st, 2023.
Okay, and then if there were to be any change within the budget, the mayor submitted budget, where the salary would be higher than the ordinance, we would have to revisit, correct?
And that's why we go to 2180 to try to catch up. And historically, to be candid, we don't catch up all that well with 2180.
Right.
It doesn't really reflect, so we're trying to do that, that's why this item is here now. Once we figure out, once you figure out what you want to do with the finance matters, that triggers what 2180 ultimately says for now and the next three years. Historically, if you flipped open the book to section 2180, it's not accurate, it's not correct. I'd like it to be if you could.
Any other questions?
Just want to follow up on that, so not accurate, not correct, you mean, Mayor Concanon, you'd like to get them up to the levels that they should be? Is that, that's what you mean by not?
I just like the numbers in 2180 to reflect what the people are actually making. Because if you open up the book to try to see what someone's salary is, it should be correct. And historically, it's not, it's behind, it lags. We try to catch up periodically, and what does the clerk, you know, we try to catch up. This council amends this periodically to try to reflect the most recent numbers, but generally speaking, it's not all in actually.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Is there a motion to return to the regular order?
Oh, don't move.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
What is the will of the committee?
I'm gonna make a motion that the Economic Development Manager be taken out of this order.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed.
We want, do you need a roll call for that?
I don't need a roll call, I just need to know what the vote was.
Yeah, it was four to one.
Four to one?
Yep. But Counselor DeMar is opposing, yep.
Thank you.
I'm also gonna make a motion, and I don't do this lightly, but I still have the same opinion that I had not too long ago about the assistant to the mayor, the chief of staff, I'm not sure what we're calling it, but I feel like that money would be better spent someplace else. I'm not sure the rest of the council or the mayor would agree with me, but I know, I know. But I'm gonna make the motion that it be removed, I have not, I'm gonna make the motion that it be removed. I won't support it when it comes to the budget and I can't support it here, so.
Is there a second? The motion is made to remove the assistant to the mayor chief of staff position from the ordinance. Is there a second? That was the motion, correct? Is there a second?
Then I would say motion fails, yeah.
Second, the motion fails at this time.
That's all I have.
All right, well, seeing that there's additional information that the auditor is gonna be getting to us, I think the recommendation of the chair would be to either hold this in committee or send this back for action and I'll leave it up to the membership to make the motion.
So we don't have any action to take till we.
Just hold it in committee.
Yep, make a motion, do we have other business in the ordinance? Yeah, okay.
So that closes the discussion on municipal code, section 2-180. Under the next item on our agenda is President Dillon, per request of the mayor, for proposed zoning amendments adding new section 36 entitled Protected Use Accessory Dwellings and adding 1A and 1B to section 5.1 Table of Use Regulations Related to Accessory Dwelling Units. For the edification of the members, I have reprinted out by the clerk so greatly per my request. He took care of this for us.
So, thank you.
Thank you all for doing that.
Oh, thank you.
Pass that down, add in please and make sure Counselor Viola gets a copy.
Yep. Good evening again, so is that, uh, section 36 that you have? That's, I think we basically take that from a.
I heard that, Mark, I'll second your motion, is that a motion?
Throw it away, I was suggesting that they throw it away.
The circular file.
Well, that goes down as a fast waste of taxpayer money.
But so unbelievably, this has been adopted in 760 CMR in the state. That had, that was adopted and last week they changed it. So what I, I thought Lagan might be here for this, but I guess she's here with the mayor. So what I'd like to pass out is this actual CMR with the changes redlined.
Make a motion to accept that as part of the record. The actual for today.
All those in favor? Aye.
Well, it will be tagged, obviously, and so what I did, and my suggestion's gonna be, and it's obviously the living committee, is the living committee review all this and let's get back together on it. I talked to some members that, you know, there's no big rush in a sense. The state's gonna do what it does, but you do have to adopt it at some point. So what I did, and I'll go through a couple of small things, was to take the proposed section 36 and make the changes of that, the CMR.
I have one more proposal.
Yep.
Oh, thank you.
So that'll be your second document. Unfortunately, what I, only has the black line, but you can tell what it's gonna change.
Make a motion to accept that as part of the.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So what document is this?
So this is the amended proposed section 36.
This is part of the ordinance.
The ordinance itself.
amended ordinance, thank you.
Reflecting the changes of the CMR. And again, I suggest that you take it, you know, get in bed, whatever you want to do.
The last thing I want to do with the ADU ordinance.
If you're having trouble sleeping.
It was another word that could have made it more funny.
Just let me highlight a tad because what they've done, they've become more primitive from my standpoint. So I think we do have, decided that we had used the phrase, single-family zone. And in that, I think I explained earlier that single-family zone means anywhere a single family can be built, including a non-conforming one in a IP zone. And in that, in our ordinance, we had said what is allowed is an attached or detached ADU to a single-family dwelling. This state, everyone has confirmed with me that that should read a primary structure. And a primary structure includes a two-family house, includes a three-family house. So if it's a legal two-family, if it's a legal three-family, this says you can have an ADU there, all right? And that we can't prevent it. That's one, that's a major highlight of this particular revision, okay? The other thing is that we had said, tried to put in a couple of restrictions, one being the rear setback to be less than thirty to fifteen. Well, in the reading of this, that's not acceptable either.
This, when you say, I'm sorry, through the chair, the new, okay.
Is that we have to honor whatever the primary structure or an accessory structure follows on that lot and accessory structures can be pulled feet off the back of that lot.
It's being allowed, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Even for one family?
Yes, if you have a garage that's pulled feet off the back of it. Now, we can try to make it more restrictive. I think there are certain things you can try. One is, I would suggest we keep in the lot coverage restriction, which is to remain the same as what's in the code so that you can't really totally overbuild there. But other than that particular restriction, including height, setback and everything else, our hands are basically tied. But I suggest the committee, or even the whole council, read it over, email me, let's, we can meet again and talk about what we can and can't do and go from there.
In the meantime, is there any questions for Counselor DeMar?
Attorney Savadi, if it's a two, if it's a three, if it's a four, is it one ADU per the building or is it one ADU per the structure or the?
Per the unit, I mean?
Per the unit, thank you.
I believe it's one for the structure, okay? It really hasn't come down as to what they would do if it was a condo. So if you had a duplex that was condoized, I think someone could make the argument, those are two separate units that each get an ADU. I don't know how you deal with it if the first guy in gets his and the other guy doesn't.
So let me ask this, if you have a sprawling townhouse type system like we have up in Norhouben, there's five, six units lined up. North Woburn, and there's five, six units lined up, can they then take and put an ADU per unit?
I don't think they can if they're not condoized.
Well, they're all individual townhouses, is what I'm
Well, are they rented or are they, are they
They're purchased.
Purchased, condoized unit? If they have an argument that they could do it.
I think unless, so unless they have a property-sharing agreement in the back
The condo
That isn't dedicated, yeah, the condo dogs, we have
My mistake that they can't. My mistake that they cannot.
Right.
Or put an in-law
Those can be changed.
Well, the fact is, that's to each unit.
I'm just thinking
Usually shared space.
I'm thinking the basements, if they wanted to put an in-law in the basement. It's an unfinished basement, which most of those units, up in North Woburn, are unfinished. Actually, I think all of them were. If you wanted to, I mean, they got nine-foot ceilings, so.
Well, one, one thing it does allow is that a second unit on a lot requires a special permit. Whereas
Say that again, I'm sorry.
A second ADU
Yeah.
On a lot
Yeah.
Requires, can require a special permit.
So the first one's a
The first one's by right.
That's a, yeah.
Yeah, the first one's by right, just get, you go down and get a building permit.
Two cat detached garage.
The second one can be a special permit.
So technically, if you had, say, a split, and you make the downstairs an ADU, and you have a detached garage, and you want to put a loft above that garage?
That would be special permit.
That'd be a special permit for a two. And if it was to be permitted, now you've got three units on one lot. Yeah, this, this
But if it's a single-family home, I think the acting made you can only have one ADU.
Counselor Allen?
No, the ADU itself, does it, if it's a single-family home or whatever, does it have to be attached, or can it be separate?
Either, it can be either.
With a maximum of nine hundred
Nine hundred square feet. Or half the size of the house, if that's less, which is not very often. So on a sixteen-hundred-square-foot house, you could, you can only have eight hundred square foot ADU.
President Dillon?
Yeah, I'm going to make my public service announcement again, because I spoke to someone today that said, what's wrong with city councilal putting this through? Why are you guys doing this? Not us, not the mayor, it's the state.
Yes.
We have an unfunded mandate, in my opinion. We have to do it. There's no, and on top of that, I'm looking at, this is even more restrictive, at least maybe the, not ten feet off the lot line, in case of an emergency, a fire, you would think it would dictate common sense to give some room for a firebeak truck to get around and put out a fire. But this is what we have coming from the state people. I'm done.
Counselor Campbell?
As you know, I'm in Ward one. Porter Street, Richardson Street.
Mm-hmm.
All of these houses are right next to each other. Parking is terrible as it is, and then to allow something like this on top of it? Where are these people parking? This is just so, they did not think this through at all, and it's extremely disappointing. It's not that we don't want to help people find places to live, but you can't just throw a mandate like this out and just make everybody allow it. And I know we don't have a choice, and so thank you, um, President Dillon, for saying that, but it is frustrating. And what's going to happen for the residents who are living in these areas that are more on the congestive side, it's really going to wreak havoc, and exactly what you said about the fire and the police, and, um, it's really unfortunate, but, but like you said, it is what it is.
To clarify, you are required to provide one parking space per unit.
Unless you're upset, excuse me.
Unless you're the other
Thank you. Well, uh, Boston.
You are required, oh, okay. All right, well, that might be a little
You have to provide for one spot. But like, my colleague has said multiple times to my right, one bedroom, two cars.
Agreed.
That's right.
Yeah, that's why it's somewhat irrational.
Yeah. Okay.
Counselor Mercer, Brian?
I'm just going to ask a question. I seem to keep asking, I asked it about the MBTA three A communities law. Why can't we challenge it? Why can't we be those, that town that says, you know what? No, we're not going to do it. Funding, special funding, we might not get it. Why can't we stand up to the state? I don't understand. We shouldn't just sit back and think this stuff. At the end of the day, the MBTA three, three A community, okay, caught a wash, can't do anything about it. This has a hundred times the impacts, and I don't think anybody on this council is saying we don't want any ADUs. Right? I think the ADUs are not really a bad idea, right? But the way that they've laid it out, would you agree, Attorney Savadi, that ADUs are a good idea to some extent, but this
With reasonable regulations?
This is
They took away the reasonable.
They, they've completely just stomped over
Yeah.
Every, everything. So I'm asking, why do we have to? Why do we have to say, yeah?
You don't
Again, we'll let the Commonwealth run us over.
You can adopt any ordinance you want.
And, and face the wrath of, of the state house.
Correct.
Right, well, I, you know
Well, and the courts
And, and the courts, but no, but I'm, I guess what I'm asking is, why don't we ask our community how they feel about it? And, and if they're willing, if, if we're willing to stand up, they also have to know that means a court case, that means we may go to battle with the state. I know everybody I've talked to wants to do that, but there could be a whole flood of people out there that say, no way, we shouldn't do that. I'm just saying, I don't think we should be so quick to say, let's let them do it to us again. Not when we're talking about the kinds of implications here that are far worse than we've already faced with the, the other mandates from Boston. That's all.
Counselor DeMerris?
This, this is, I've been saying this, I've been banging this drum for a year, and I knew this was coming down, and some people call it fear-mongering. It's not fear-mongering. I've warned everyone this was coming, and now, this thing's on steroids. They've limited nothing. They've actually broadened it. They've made it so you can almost do almost anything anybody that's really creative can do. Plus the on-street parking portion of this. So you, you got to give them one parking spot, but if they come with three or four vehicles, I'm assuming three or four vehicles now hits the streets, which means come wintertime, we're going to have one hell of a time plowing our street. We have a tough time now. Let me ask you something, City Solicitor Savadi? How bad do you, what's keeping you up at night with this? What do you see that is a possibility?
Um, I
That we may not be seeing?
From a personal standpoint, I was accepting of it, uh, if it were on a single-family home with a decent-sized lot. I think it's the two-family thing that's going to really affect this. You know, it's just too crowded, but, you know, it's not, that's not a legal opinion.
No, I'm just saying, like, the context, I guess you could say
Right.
Aspect, possibility, that seems to be a distinct possibility.
I mean, again, this council can put in a restriction, uh, and, and see what happens. If you put a restriction on, um, a two-family, that you can only have one unit.
But will it be challenged into the court systems, and will the land courts just go, nope, you lose?
I think it'd be, I think the state will just tell you, you have to do it, you know.
Solicitor Savadi, is there a current ongoing open period of comment, or are they taking suggestions from municipalities because these regulations seem to keep changing?
I think that's over. I think that, uh, I mean, they were having some more webinar about it, uh, but I don't think they were accepting comment from municipalities at this point.
So I know I've said it before, it's all in blue in the face, but this is the legislature abrogating their responsibility?
Absolutely.
By passing what they want to have happen?
That's right.
And then handing it over to unelected bureaucrats, which that's the new buzzword nowadays? Unelected bureaucrats from the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities that write the CMRs, which is the Code of Massachusetts Regulations, where they can basically write whatever they want.
But they're voting for it.
Well, but that's the problem, it does, it's like a four-page bill that at the bottom of it, it says, E O H L C will write the regulations that will promulgate this act, and then it opens Pandora's box. President Dillon?
Uh, thank you. And I think many of us would feel differently about this if it had an owner-occupancy part to it, because then there's some responsibility.
Yes, exactly.
The people that are renting are living there, they're not going to let shenanigans go on in their property. But when I talk to Commissioner Quinn, and he'll, he'll tell you, we've had this conversation, I often ask him, what's one of the most difficult parts of your job? Absentee landlords.
Yeah.
This just opens up the floodgates, in my opinion. And to your point, Counselor Bruin, I think the only alternative we, we have is when we vote, because it's already been tested with the MBTA communities, they took it to court, they won through the Supreme Court, though they didn't roll it out properly, so they had to reroll it out based on how they rolled it out. But I'm as frustrated as you, and open for suggestions, what we could do. Certainly is an overreach, in my opinion. Yeah.
So, so my suggestion of what we should do is start getting on the phone and calling other people in other towns. I'll, I'll call the, the town manager in Reading, somebody call the town manager and stone him, we'll each take a town manager and ask them how they feel about it. Get, let's, let's get people together, let's make some noise. Maybe the governor might listen if it's more than just one city or town. I don't know, but how do we know if we don't try? And, and frankly, I think, you know, with the city of Woburn knocking at some of these people's doors, maybe that might give them some pause and say, hey, you know what? Maybe we should shake the trees on this thing. But if we don't try, we don't know. That's all I'm saying.
Well, I would, I would say too, it's, you know, we have to decide what we would want to challenge, if we're going to challenge something. We can't challenge the whole act itself. But certain restrictions or more local control and so forth, we would have to be very specific because they wouldn't, challenging the whole law itself, this applies to everybody. If you were to challenge the whole MBTA three law, three A law, we probably would have had better standing, because it was limiting to
Oh, don't get me started on that.
No, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, when it comes to this, this is a state law that impacts every community.
Right.
Not just a limited subsection of, of communities, so you'd have to be very narrow in scope if you wanted to do a legal challenge.
And state your reasons.
Yep. Exactly. Because it would, it, it would be
It has to be a legitimate
It would be futile to attack the whole law. Not to mention the fact that I've, I've had constituents who are basically fifty-fifty on this issue. They all like it because they're looking at their property rights, they're looking at their ability to keep family there or enhance their, their income, their earnings. But then there's also people concerned of, of the, the thing that was brought up by Solicitor Savadi about, you know, we're going to have three garage apartments behind a three-family home if it can, if it's considered each unit.
But to that point, why don't we do what the state didn't do, right? Make it a better law and say to them, we're not saying we won't do it, we're just saying we won't do, we don't think we should have to do what you said we have to do.
Make your restrictions reasonable.
Exactly, and I'm not asking for any of us to make them unreasonable. I just think we should take a, a crack at it. Attorney Savadi?
Counselor DeMerris?
I also want to just make one statement. You know, the legislators voted this and approved this overwhelmingly. I believe it was like a hundred and fifty to like thirteen, whatever it was.
And remember, they didn't, they didn't approve the regulations.
They approved the law.
Well, they approved the law, but in any case
Regulations came out.
That, that, that greased the skids. And, and then this all comes down, and then they make it from what I had ago, that's, that's no good. Now that's, that's trash. Now they've broadened it, so they're widening the spectrum on what you can and cannot do. And there's a lot you can do and very little you can't do. This, this is ugly. And this is an overreach.
So we're, if I may, Chairman, where, where we start, right? So we're here tonight, you said, you want, Attorney Savadi?
Yeah.
You want us to look at this?
Yeah.
Go through it. You made some very valid points about some of the things that we really should, maybe we create two ordinances, you know, the, the one we think it really should be that's reasonable.
Sure. Well, however, however the communities like the policy, I mean, I'd be glad to meet with them, or I'm not sure about, um, posting in public meeting and all that, but, uh, maybe, like I said, it's on me, I would suggest. We could have Commissioner Quinn, and Director DeShale.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments for this?
But once, but once again, I, I do think you're right, but because it's already a law, we, we will most likely lose in court, but no reason not to try. I, I agree with that. But who we have to get to are the legislators, so that they understand how happy, yeah, how happy, how unhappy we all are, and not just us. We have to get to our constituents for them to understand what exactly is happening. And once again, I know you said fifty-fifty, and I, I do understand that, but when they start to realize what's going to happen with the streets, then, and, and once again, I'm saying my ward, but Ward two and other areas, um, they already don't have places to park when it snows, it really is a nightmare for, for the people. And now we're packing on more people living in these, uh, these homes.
I, I would also caution my colleagues that the matter with which we go about our way of challenging this, if we wanted to?
Mm-hmm.
We have to think, do we want to find reasons and then sue the Commonwealth, or try to file for an injunction of this matter? Or are we going to create our own ordinance that can be challenged and suit can be brought towards the city and cost the taxpayer money? So I think that, that, that's an important consideration to make.
Okay.
Because we would not want to have the taxpayers have to front lawsuits against our ADU ordinance not meeting the state requirements, as opposed to trying to find legal relief of the current regulations. I think that would be the more appropriate approach, but that's above my
Okay, yeah, no, once again, this is something that we can discuss, we're, we're looking at it once again. I do believe that we need to talk to our constituents to have them understand, uh, what this means, um, because, uh, once again, some in the, in the single-family homes, you know, they're thinking, why not? I have an extra basement, my mother-in-law needs someplace to live, my nephew, okay, that's fine. But when you're starting to talk about all these
Weird uncle.
Right, you start talking about all, yeah, all these other homes, townhouses, I mean, it really, it could be absolutely crazy, and I think the biggest problem is the absentee landlord issue. Because of what we just went through with Counselor DeMerris and Bruin, and that property and her ward for that exact thing.
Solicitor Savadi, was there a deadline for our action with regards to an ordinance?
This is, this has been adopted, someone can file for it now. So, um
So you need us to do some homework?
Well, but
So it didn't have an effective date?
So the, it was February fourth.
February fourth. And they're still changing the regulations?
They're just changing
And I, and I think the general public, the ones that I've talked to, understand that they're, they're not going to take action until we adopt something, which is a smart move, because if you don't, we're right. I would suggest we do it in the, in the next sixty days, get done.
Okay.
So seeing that, I guess the recommendation would be no action?
General, please, committee?
Yeah.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
I just had a quick question, Attorney Savadi had a good idea, you mentioned, you know, getting Commissioner Quinn and some others, uh, maybe down through the committee meetings after we've gone through this as well. And, you know, to the point about the lawsuits and afraid of lawsuits or whatever, um, so there's, there's, uh, other, other ways to approach it, right? So, um, we still can raise awareness through the community, um
Sure.
To challenge the state, but that still requires us to get partners to do that.
Mm-hmm.
I would agree with that.
And, um, reach out to other communities. So eminent domain was a law when they wanted to take all those houses from ninety-three and one-twenty-eight, everybody said, you can't stop that. Well, guess what? Yeah, we did. So, so, but we did that through forming a coalition with our community. So if that's an approach people are open to, I, I will help open the door to that if people will help me. So we can do both things at the same time.
Agreed.
Yes?
And I have one other question, Chairman Demers, one other question. The, are you saying that the, so I just want to make sure that I understand the process. So the legislature, they go ahead, they make a law?
They pass a law and it usually has a clause at the end of it.
They hand it to this company here?
Well, that's, that's the executive office. So that's the Secretary of Housing and Livable Communities.
Whatever it is.
And their agency writes the regulations. And as the regulations are finalized, they become full force of law.
Yes, okay. So I, yeah, all right, I did understand that, but. I guess they're still allowing it to go through. I'm trying to figure out how to change that piece of it through the legislature.
I mean, they could, they could amend it. They could amend it, but I would caution you to be wary of the power that one, only one delegation, legislative delegation has on Beacon Hill.
Oh, no, I know that.
There, there's bills in there that have more than half of the legislature's cosponsors that don't see the light of day on the floor for a vote.
But that doesn't mean no action.
No, it does.
No, no, it doesn't. I'm not, I'm not shying you away from that. I just want everybody to have realistic expectations.
Stinks.
I'm not disagreeing with you.
Is there a way to change it?
That's the legal part.
That might have been the most succinct argument.
But thank you.
Maybe that should be up there.
Seeing no action, is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Attorney Salvati, thank you.
Discussion in my committee.
Now we're going.
They're going to go after this.
We're doing final.
We touched on it.
What's next?
I'm just going to grab a glass.
Oh, I know, it's a disaster, but.
Right there.
I, I end up saying we put in seven, not a reason.
But I can see it right now, like for years.
That's what he just said. We pick up one delegate.
When you can build a new structure.
Reality of it is.
If we at least preempt.
Like if you had a garage.
Hey, 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 hey.
Thought it was my time.
All right, I'm going to call the Committee on Finance to order. I'm Chair, Chairman Viola. With the members of the committee is Counselor Campbell, Counselor Demers, Counselor Perullo and Counselor Marissa Bruin.
After you, Counsel Perullo.
I'll do it. Wait for the reading in a minute. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Second item on the agenda is ordered that the sum of $48,812.85 be transferred from male salary account via regular salary account.
Mr. Mayor. Evening. Again, I'm joined by Auditor Dory and HR Director Healy. This item has to do with the two heads of the fire department, the chief and the deputy. These are the adjustments to be made to their salaries. Chief is under a personal contract as is the police chief. And the deputy follows the.
Follows the fire unions.
Fire union settlement per ordinance. But the total amount is $48,000. Again, the auditor and the director here, if you have any questions.
Anybody on the committee have any question?
Make a motion under the order sent out on the day.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the order that the sum of $129,190.23 be transferred from male salary adjustment account to non-union employee salaries, various salary accounts.
This is the other item that was the companion piece to what we talked about earlier. These are the, the two buckets.
The buckets.
I won't do that again, but just to remind you, that's what this is about.
So I would suggest we just leave it in committee until we finish up with our previous business chairman. I don't think we don't need to take any action. Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We stand adjourned 7:35.
Thank you, Mayor. Oh, me. Me next?
The one standing up, those are.
Standing up.
The, the, while the documents that are, the documents that are upright, those need to be accepted by the committee because they were submitted by Attorney Giuliano after the last discussion.
If I pull them out, will I wreck anything in here?
You won't wreck it.
Really use the. All right. I'll make a motion that we commence with the Committee on Special Permits. I'm the chairman, Counselor Marissa Bruin. Also, we have Counselor Campbell, Counselor Viola, Counselor DeMambo and Counselor Demers. And we have a full house tonight in special permits.
We're in suspense of the reading and the previous meeting.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Have a motion to accept, uh, the FOIIN dated. March 17th, 2025, along with the list of proposed conditions, um, of which I see 16 of them. I'm attorney, do, do I have a motion?
So move.
Second. On favor?
Aye.
Okay. Attorney Giuliani?
Good evening. Director Attorney James Giuliano here, behalf of the applicant tree top LLC, who is here with us tonight as, as well as the architect for any questions that the committee and the council have. So since our last public hearing, uh, there were some requests on revisions of the sheets, which I supplied after that meeting. So just to go over a few of the major changes, we did change the first floor plan. Uh, if you remember correctly, there was three full bathrooms. It was requested that the first floor bathroom be changed to a half bath powder room, which that, uh, that plan does reflect. And the civil sheets, which are, I think, the last two sheets, uh, are relating to water and sewer with regards to comments by Jayden Rand. So we did change those. Basically, the, the crux of those changes are, um, the sizing of the, of the water and the sewer pipes. Uh, those pipes, the house is built in 1910, so a lot of that has to be updated specifically because now with the new code, we have to have fire suppression systems which need more pressure. So the flow test is, is obviously going to come back that we need. So we're, we're preparing for all of that. The drainage reports, uh, again, we haven't seen any, no, those are requests from a few of the councils uh, with regards to the, the maintenance of the catch basins. Uh, I have not seen anything requested. I don't know if the counselor or the committee members have seen anything that has come back. I haven't seen any maintenance records, so I cannot provide those as of today. Um, again, going back to my argument from the public hearing is that, you know, we'll do our best onsite to make that whole area better. We understand there is an issue there, but we'll do our best onsite to fix that whole area. But again, I don't, I don't think it, it should be of any applicant to, to mitigate the, the whole neighborhood. But again, going back to the drainage, we have, uh, pervious pavers which will provide the parking. So everything that will be going for runoff will hit that pervious pavement and seep into the soil. That is not being done right now. I believe anything that's, there's probably a little patch of grass there now and the rest is impervious. So what happens, as you probably know what impervious, uh, is that the water just goes wherever the grade is and in most of the time it goes right to the streets and over, overloads the catch basin. So I, I won't say that that will fix the problem, but it will severely decrease the problem. We did speak to, uh, obviously a few of the neighbors have always been speaking to them, specifically, uh, Mr. Carrigan, who's, who's here, uh, with relating to the question that the council did have regarding the plantings. My client is on board with planting some, you know, something that is, uh, is appeasing to, uh, Mr. Carrigan, but, uh, that can be determined at a certain point, whether it's abreviate or maple trees or something that will, you know, suck up some water, that's, that's agreeable. We did do, I know he had some comments, I know I can't speak, but there was some concerns of whether or not the retaining wall, which is also on the revised sheets as well. The retaining wall is, is fully on our property. We do have to cut and obviously create some sort of a backing. We have to put some gravel, we have to create some drainage so the water can come out so there's no pressure behind that. That'll all be done on our property. Uh, and again, if there's any trees from roots that are killed, we are responsible for those and we will, uh, add those to the planting plan. Uh, so that, that sheet should have addressed that revision as well. Uh, and last but not least, the, uh, Counselor Demers, you had a, a question or additional, um, condition relating to the building permit application, filing a sequencing plan for demolition in existing, uh, structure construction, which I did add to, uh, condition 16. I believe everything else was, was fine. I don't think there's any other conditions that I missed, but if I did, we can certainly discuss them. So again, I think our goal here is that this thing's been probably sitting with, with the council for a long time. I think, uh, we would like to not see a no action tonight, leaving the committee, but some sort of ought to pass or, um, maybe back for action and leaving the council. But I think at this point, I think my client has provided pretty much everything that we can at this point. Again, the number of units are four. The bedroom count, Zillow and my client's, uh, Zillow in, in the city records have it as nine plus bedrooms. Uh, my client is saying there's 10. So with the four, three bedrooms, we're adding 12. Okay, so there's an additional two uni, uh, two bedrooms that are being added from what's there now. I think you've seen we shrunk the footprint to, uh, what was there, what is there now, which I think is, is a good progression from where we were from the beginning of this. Uh, and again, just to remind the council that the standard under section 7.3 is substantially not detrimental to the neighborhood. I think taking the totality of this, I think it warrants that, um, to take it out of committee and say, you know, we would like a favorable ought to, ought to pass. But I think that the totality of this project has been, uh, substant, makes that neighborhood substantially better to this surrounding neighborhood. So again, uh, any questions you have for me or my client, we'll sort of answer them.
Thank you, Attorney Giuliano. First, I'm going to ask, um, to have a motion to.
I'll make a motion that we open it up to our voting members.
On favor?
Aye.
And I'll just go around the room. I'll start with you, President Dillon. I know this is your ward.
Yes, thank you, Counselor Bruin. Simple question.
Sure.
What about making it all two bedrooms?
All two bedrooms, I think, um, when I talk to my client about that, the cap rate, obviously we have to weigh the realities of it with the cap rate or else there's just no reason to, to do anything. There's a reason just to keep what's there and maybe, you know, put some siding on it and call it a day. I don't think we're making the situation better in that neighborhood as a whole. Um, I think it's just more balancing that, that cap rate, Mr. President, with, um, with doing the project at all. I think at that point, the cap rate is so low that it just doesn't make sense for, for my client to do anything at all.
Well, I would agree with that except the property has really run down now. And at some point, the deferred maintenance on it is catching up to it. So I think it's beyond putting major improvements in it anyways. But that's not our problem that they let it run down to that point. That's their problem. And we say through the years, these extra bedrooms got in there. Because they got in there doesn't mean it's right. So I stick with, I want to see all two bedrooms. Just my opinion, my ward, and I hope the other counselors, uh, feel the same way. Thank you.
Anybody else from the council? Committee? Oh, sorry.
That's right.
Council?
Uh, Attorney Giuliano, how much of the actual property itself, the green space, whatever's going to be utilized for parking?
So whatever's left is going to be pretty much what you're seeing now. Um, so there's parking that will go, there's two spots on the left that I believe are, uh, of, when I say believe, I, I asphalt, compact dirt, the material is. So there'll be two cars on the left and then a driveway going to the back. So it, it, it's a majority of it. The only, and, and again, it's, it's no different than what's there now. There's a, the only difference is the grass face that you see at the existing house now that's being used for additional parking, that they're parking on the grass, will be all grass and landscape. So they'll not, they're not going to be able to be parking in that area that they are now in front of the house, which, you know, aesthetically is clearly nice.
So you're saying aesthetic marks, uh, circumferentially around the whole property, about 90% is going to be used for parking, would you say?
Yeah, I mean, and, and that's, that's sticks to what's there now, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Campbell.
I agree with President Dillon. I believe that you need to stick with two bedrooms and not go any more than that. Um, the area is extremely congested, um, definitely run down. And my view on it is if you redo the whole building, obviously they're going to be able to ask more money for rent. So hit the profits, he'll be able to make up the profits that is needed, uh, for what he's spending. Uh, and also I want to defer to the counselor of the ward because he knows his ward. And, um, so I say, I agree with the staying with two bedrooms in that area. Thank you.
Counselor Demers, then Counselor Papalatto.
My only question this evening is, we have parking allowed, well, parking assigned for two, four, six, eight spots, but we're going to have 12 units, or 12 bedrooms, I'm sorry. How are we going to, so are we basic, are you basically conceding the point that there's going to be four off-street park or on-street parking?
No, I, I would just say that we are meeting the ordinance under what is existing right now. Yeah. So, and again, right now, I just want to make a note, right now, there is enough parking for six or seven. So the, the existing condition of it is not meeting, clearly not exceeding, but not meeting what the parking requirement is now. I think that's a lot of the reason why we're seeing off-street park or on-street parking issues.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Counselor Papalatto, then Counselor Dillon.
Have we, have we spoken to the neighbors? I know they're very actively involved there and have they spoken on your adjustments to the plan?
Yeah, I mean, they've been, they've been vocal clearly, um, you know, as to the number of bedrooms. Um, so, I mean, we've had, like, hopefully I've been transparent enough with everybody. And, uh, we've had conversations, sure.
So based on your new plan there, is there acceptance from the neighbors or there's still pushback?
The, the elephant in the room is, yeah, sorry. The, the elephant in the room is, is the number of bedrooms. Uh, and I, and I get that. I, I, I certainly, we get that. We're just asking, you know, again, to, under the ordinance of substantially more detrimental, just weighing those two things and saying, look, we want to put a brand new building that's going to be gorgeous, but at some point too, you have to, you have to weigh those options as far as, okay, you know, does it make sense for somebody to come in and, and make this really a nice thing and, and clean up the neighborhood?
All right, so the deal breaker for the neighbors is the number of bedrooms?
I think, and I don't want to speak for them, but I think that's the, the number one thing that is, is concerning.
Okay, thank you.
I make a motion. Uh, no.
Oh, not yet.
One second. One second. Counselor DeMambo?
Thank you.
Sorry.
Yeah, no.
Attorney Giuliano, you know, when I look at this, even though we haven't had a bad winter, I'm, I'm, I'm looking at it if we have a bad winter. I don't know where all that snow is going to go. I mean, you could probably put a snow retention area in here, but then if you just pile it up to a considerable height, now we got to worry about dark come, you know, March, April, May, however long it takes for that pile to melt. You know, so I'm kind of concerned with pocket flooding in the area. But, you know, as I look at this, and, and if I had to plow this unit, I would have to say, I don't know where you're going to put the snow, especially the way the cars are pretty much scattered as is. You can either stick it in that corner or that corner and you're going to have a real odd time if it's, you know, an eight to 12-inch storm. Because it is going to pile up and, you know, we're running into this problem throughout the city where a lot of these, you know, homes and apartment buildings, the contractors are pushing the stuff out in the street. They're piling it up on sidewalks and our DPW is having one hell of a time, you know, plowing the sidewalks and so on and so forth, so that our kids a day or two later can go back to school. You know, up in North Woburn, I got kids walking over, you know, windrows, sometimes four and six feet high just to get to their school. So this is a concern of mine because I could easily see how somebody could take, flip around and then push all the snow out into the street. And, and, and that's going to be a real big problem if we ever get that snow that we know we're going to get sooner or later. And the other thing is too, you know, when it comes down to number of bedrooms, you know, I don't, I don't see why you can't go with the two bedrooms. I know you did say that they wouldn't be willing to, to go ahead with the project and leave it as is, but, you know, the way rents are today and how, you know, what people are paying it, you know, Woburn Village, Woburn Heights and so on and so forth, and emblem, you know, he could still make plenty of money on a two-bedroom unit, um, and, and still be okay on these four units. I, I don't see how one more bedroom is going to take and, and hurt him financially. Um, if anything, he could make some of the other rooms a little bit bigger and make it more palatable and kind of broaden, you know, uh, this clientele that may want to rent those units, um, in the future because there is more space. And I think these days people like open concept. They don't like, you know, contained. So I, I, I feel two units, uh, two bedrooms per unit, that's applicable. I don't see why he can't do that. That's all I got. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And before we take a motion to, and open it up to the public, I first of all want to commend President Dillon for holding the line and two, two bedrooms is more than reasonable, more than reasonable. Our responsibility is not the profitability. Our responsibility is not the profitability of your client's project. You need, you need to worry about that. We need to worry about other things. Um, I, I could never get my head around that this was less detrimental, the way you were presenting it. I, I thought about, I'm like, how do I possibly convince, convince myself those words really mean it's less detrimental? Never, never, not the way it's been presented. So I just wanted to make that comment from the chair. And, um, I will take a motion to open it up to the public. Second. And if anyone would like to speak, if you could just come up, uh, somewhere.
Can I call ahead?
Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
You're good.
Thank you. Sorry, Gordon. Thank you, Joe.
I'm Adam Carrigan, about Sixth Court Street. Their whole back line is 70% of my back line.
Get that, Gordon? You've got name, address, yeah? Okay. Thank you, sir.
I spoke with Jim earlier today. Um, I looked at the sheets that you sent me, and that last sheet shows the, um, retaining wall being directly on the property line with the footing extending three-plus feet into my property.
That's a, so that's, that's a cross-section, so that's the gray area within the, that's the, that's where-
That's the three feet?
That's, that's the retaining wall.
Mm-hmm. Go ahead. In the gray. Right. I don't think you have the ability to put that in, to backfill that property without disturbing my property.
We have the architect here, so we should can-
Okay. That's, yeah, that'll definitely, uh, because I can't have my fence fall over my dog getting out. And, uh, you know, my kids are, uh, already pretty upset that, you know, A, the frambles are going to have to move, but B, the trees are going to go away that are existing. Uh, we do have cherry trees directly on the property line that we planted as a family. Um, so there's that. Another thing generally, uh, regarding the, uh, the amount of bedrooms and the parking and whatnot, the basement has, um, egress windows, and I haven't been following along super close. I should because I'm with CSL, but, uh, hey, Rob knows, do you have to have an egress window in a basement? I don't think we do. Because that looks like a poison pill to me to be a unfinished room.
Yeah, if it's, if it's living space.
Right. It's an unfinished basement. It doesn't need one. They would have to pull a permit to get an egress. That could be one thing to help hold the line to limiting bedrooms and having the creep that has happened all over this town with, uh, non-conforming things. The parking, uh, in the back, the idea that people are going to double up and park, that's only going to happen when there's snow burn, see? Otherwise, people are going to single park and park on the street. I see it happen. I have two single file driveways. That's what we do. Um, the otherwise, you know, the permeability stuff looks good. I really don't care about the three bedrooms, uh, per. I mean, it seems like you're just going to keep pushing on this monster, and I only have so much time in the day, um, to spend fighting this. I will say though, that, uh, you know, if the, uh, retaining wall needs to, I really do anything with our property, we're going to have to come to an agreement on, uh, you know, some sort of, uh, schedule and payment for that essentially, because, uh, you know, it can't be any sort of open-ended thing. Need to be like $1,000 per day for the time of disturbance until my permanent fence is replaced. Because I've seen stuff, I've done it myself, stretch out forever, things go wrong, whatever, I would need it prioritized. But it's, it's my yard, it's my dog, it's my kids. So I'm willing to work with you to a degree, but, uh, there, there needs to be respect for, and today was the first day that I've had someone call me about this. And I have the most property line in common with this. So I don't feel incredibly charitable, but I'm trying. So that's about what I got. Any questions for me?
No, I just have a comment, sir. It makes me incredibly sad when I hear someone say, I, I don't have the time anymore for this. And because you have been, your time has been, I am so sad. No, no. And that's not how it should be. This is a game. This is a game that many developers play. They just wear it down and wear it down and wear it down. We can't let that happen. We can't let that happen. So I can tell you, if I have anything to say about it, it's not going to happen. So keep the faith.
I'll be honest.
We, we will hold the line. First time somebody's contacted you since this whole thing's been going on, that's a little disappointing too.
So I, I will say, I would not mind that house being razed. It is a steaming pile.
Yeah.
And this is for somebody that is a historic preservation carpenter. All right. I do bare-bones gut and remodels like it's, you know, nothing. Um, I wouldn't touch that with a 10-foot pole. Um, and I, tenants that are there, they're not a value add to the neighborhood, um, especially on the road in front. So, yeah, I would love to see that house get torn down and see something nice be built. Build a duplex, four bedrooms each. What's the market value on that? Four grand per unit renting that? And they'd have some backyard.
Well, thank you for, oh, I think there's a couple of questions, sir, if you don't mind.
So would you be willing if, if the contractor or the developer was going to take the retaining wall, your fence, incorporate your fence and, and, and get you some enclosure for your children and, and your dog? And maybe do the landscaping appropriately in accordance to, you know, you guys working it out so it's, it's, it's appealing to you and your family? Would you be willing in, in, in accepting of, of that?
Yes. There, you know, there are, you know, conditions that would need to be met. Obviously, we need a temporary fence put in probably six feet back from where the existing fence is.
Yeah, you've got to do your construction.
Um, the grade change, I think, is up to about six feet, and they need to be four feet down for their footing.
Absolutely.
So that's a 10-foot, um, deep hole from my side, and that's going to be a little bit wider than three foot, three inches.
Yeah, they're going to have to bell it out.
Right. And, you know, my trees would have to be, uh, extracted and then brought back. Um, my kid's playground that I built them probably have to be, you know. They say they can get it from their side of the fence, but given that they've got, you know, three cars side by side, that's what, 18 feet, right? Parking squad's nine feet wide? Um, I don't think they know that they have the three feet to give up this way.
I guess as long, I guess, just as long as you're willing to work with them and they can accommodate you.
Yeah.
So that whatever they disturb, they replace so that it's better.
Yeah. No, I mean, it would all be, you know, done under contract and, you know.
Oh, yeah.
Screwed, you know.
Lots of paper, lots of legal.
The wife's a licensed structural engineer, I'm a contractor. We're pretty well first in this game.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Anybody else? I thank you for hanging in there.
Again, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Anybody else like to speak? You shouldn't have to, huh?
I'm Sasha Hernandez, 13 Bennett Street.
Hey, Sasha.
Hi. I just want to point out that under zoning, we need 50% minimum percent landscaped usable open space. The existing right now is 45.6% open space, which is violating the zoning, and their proposed is 26%. I understand that right now they are not ideally parking in front of the house, but I do want to point out that the landlord is right here and could, you know, put a stop to that. And I think the current parking situation isn't great, but I do think it's just a function of how many units are there. There's a lot of people per each unit. And so these parking difficulties are all just because of how many units they're trying to put in that spot. And I don't think any amount of payment's really going to fix it because they will just have it spilling over onto the street or having to build a retaining wall to justify the parking. So I guess it doesn't make sense to me to pave a neighborhood and turn it into basically a stop-and-shop parking lot to justify the number of units that they want put in. I think I've said this three times before, I really like the idea of fixing up the current building. The current building that's from 1850 and, and my house from 1850, so maybe I'm biased. Um, and maybe put new siding on it, fix the deferred maintenance that have been, they have not done. And, you know, maybe fix the parking situation somehow if that's possible. But it just doesn't make sense to me to go from zoning, saying 50% open space, and going down to 26%, and not saying that's a further detriment to the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? No? You guys all set?
I guess.
Oh, so, oh.
If you were looking that way, I was coming over here.
He's not quite finding.
Um, all right. So for the record, Christopher Solia, 13 Bennett Street. I guess one thing that I would want to ask is, you know, who is it that determines if the, you know, a, a land use is more substantially detrimental to the neighborhood and what grounds do they have to make that decision? Is it the council? Um, is that who makes that decision ultimately? Okay.
Yes.
So, um, a couple of, um, so, I mean, honestly, you know, the, the thought of this going forward doesn't fill me with joy. You know, I'm not, I'm here obviously because, you know, this isn't what I want to see happen on this property. Um, I understand that the owner's here and, and this is, you know, what he's filing for, you know, but this is, this is the process. Um, personally, I just don't think the idea of having the parking lot in the back makes sense. I mean, I don't know if you can do that at this, to this time, but, you know, if you're going to build this thing, why not just slide the whole thing back and have the parking in the front? You know, just, just a thought, then there would be less landscaped area. One other thing with, um, impervious pavement, um, I've spoken to people who have it, and they say that you need to do relatively regular maintenance on it, that they, you know, that, you know, sand and stuff gets in the pavement and you need to go over it with a power washer and vacuum. And I just wanted to ask, is there any, um, any provision that will ensure that this maintenance actually gets done?
So, yeah, so, um, when you install these pervious pavement, uh, so, you know, companies and, and they have different instructions about how to install them and how to maintain them. So obviously, through conditions we could do, that we have to follow those instructions on how to clean them. They have to get done typically and try and go back to conservation days, but typically once a year, uh, or depending on use and things like that. So, uh, so, yeah, they, they all have to be maintained, just like any other systems.
Got you. Maybe there's some old ones that, I mean, they're not, and roofs need to be replaced, but that's not getting done.
Well, I guess for, for, on that topic, the, you know, there's less of a, I mean, candidly, like, it's your property to maintain, you know, if you want to replace the roof, um, that's on you, but the stuff or stormwater, I know we've had discussions about this, but, you know, this is something where the neighbors really, really are, that's a collective issue for the whole area. Um, so there's more of an interest here. Um, one small drafting note at the very end, by the way, um, I believe condition six at the very end, I think, uh, general utility notes, uh, condition six, um, I really do want you to be asking Woburn, DPW, and not Melrose.
Sir, if you could just address the council.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
No worries.
That's okay.
But, um, under general utility notes, um, condition six, actually, I think that was probably copied over from another document, and it says Melrose, so. Um, I guess one, one question I have for the council is, uh, for the, if we, you know, the council moves to accept this plan, you know, what-
Unless we're the City of Melrose, we probably shouldn't be accepting this plan.
I, I agree. Um, but what, what reassurance do the neighbors have that any of the demolition and construction plans are reasonable? You know, is there anyone we can go to, to, you know, make our voices heard about the construction and demolition plans, or are we sort of, you know, is this the moment, moment to talk about that?
Construction and demolition plans, that would be held, that would be handled by the building department.
Building department. Building Commissioner.
Yep.
So he's the one who, um-
Yep. If you have issues with the construction or the, the demo of the property, you would reach out to Commissioner Quinn's office.
Mm-hmm. All right. Sounds good.
And this council-
One of the conditions-
This council can put, sorry, go ahead.
One of the conditions that we've talked about is the developer would have to file a plan with Commissioner Quinn outlining all that, so that any time that they would be in violation of that or anything, Commissioner Quinn could do a stop-work order.
Okay.
Until they, until they met the rules in that, uh, in that plan.
Um, are, um, I know when these go, go to the committee, there's, I think the, one of the projects has something like 24 conditions on it or something like that. Um, do we get a sense for what those are going to be ahead of time? And, uh, or do we have a list of them?
We have a working-
There we go. Perfect. Thank you very much.
That's been proposed.
Would I be able to have a copy of this?
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, all right. Um, I don't know how to talk about aesthetics because that is obviously subjective, um, but, you know, fundamentally, I sort of feel like I'm one of the few people that likes the building that's there, particularly for the historic reasons. Um, so, you know, ultimately, um, you know, I, I would wish that the, you know, property owner was, uh, was asking for something different. Um, you know, the, the bedrooms thing as, you know, it isn't as, as much of a concern, I would say. Um, the thought of the demolition of that house, the removal of everything that's there, and having those rear tandem parking spaces, those are the big, uh, sticking points for me. Um, so, um, unless I think of anything else, um, someone else can go.
Chris, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Of course. Anybody else like to?
Margaret Hinkum, um, I'm a principal at MM5 Family LLC, 42 Bennett Street. Strike that. Sorry. 42 Pleasant Street. On the corner of Bennett Street. I think you should just deny it. I mean, stop torturing us. Just deny it. Thank you.
We might have one more thing. Still Sasha Hernandez, 13 Bennett Street. I didn't want to say I'm not-
That's still.
We have to dribble out yet.
I didn't want to say, I've managed to meet the neighbor at 3 Bennett Street, um, which is the adjoining property. I know it was sold in December. I've seen his truck parked there. I've not managed to actually run into him in person, so we do not know his opinion on the project, and that is another concern that I have, which is if I was next door to a proposed project like this, I would want to know about it. I do know his name from the registry of deeds. It's Corey Fumicella. If anyone knows him, please let him know.
Yeah, I don't think a notice has gone out since the original. The property's changed hands since then, so, hey, you shouldn't say it's not.
So I can speak on Corey Fumicella because I did his closing a couple of months ago, and he is aware of it because I had to disclose it to him that was happening. So that was, that was done. Uh, obviously, notice was, was sent out accordingly. Uh, just a few things, and, and again, a lot of this, uh, and I do want to bring the architect up, um, you know, in a few minutes if you don't mind. I, I, I do request that the committee give a little direction only because, um, a lot of these things that I'm hearing that are concerns are things that can't change, meaning the number of bedrooms is not gonna change, the snow removal, it's not gonna change the impervious area, it's not gonna change the wall. The wall we're gonna be doing as a, you know, going back to what Adam said, is all the work is to be done on our property, we don't need any easements to do any of this work. The house is gonna be proposed to be demolished, the wall will go up, the wall has been designed by our, uh, engineer, it's gonna be supplied with the building permit to our engineer in the city of Woburn. So, uh, so I just, i- if the bedrooms are a concern, I can bring that to my client, but a lot of these things, the number of bedrooms from three to two is not gonna, is, is not affected. It's, if I change, if we change to a two-bedroom, the snow, like I said, the snow and the parking is still gonna be the same, the retaining wall is still gonna be the same, so...
Parking will not be the same. If you have a three-bedroom, you're gonna have more car, people are gonna have more cars.
Correct, but we're providing eight parking spaces, we're providing two parking spaces per unit. So, and that's my point, is, is it the, is it the parking that's a problem? What's, or, or is the number of bedrooms a problem? That, I just want a little bit of direction.
It's both, in my opinion.
Five hundred feet from the city lot?
Oh, did that?
Yeah.
What?
Just a question.
What's that?
Are, are you within five hundred feet of the city lot?
Uh, we did the math and we are still doing the math, but we need to send somebody out there.
Hmm, that would be an interesting, interesting question.
It's, uh, it's, it's in my head.
Correct.
I don't know, uh, if I do have it though, but I gotta...
Oh, President Dillon, sorry, go ahead.
Would that fall under the jurisdiction of municipal lot with city hall parking?
I don't know if it's that lot, it's five hundred feet.
We'd like to...
The library, right? There you go. Thank you.
City Hall wouldn't fall?
No, city hall has parking restrictions. You have to have a parking permit during the day in city hall lot.
Right.
Even on a storm, maybe. Uh, you could do overnight parking, get that out during the day.
I'm sorry, you still have four.
Yeah, no, I just want, I just wanted some clarity, what I'm, uh, and again, what am I, uh, going back to my developer, again, some of these things can't be, won't be, parking won't be changed, the retaining wall won't be changed, um, the bedrooms only relate to not under the ordinance, but under what the concerns are is parking. Um, so I just wanna make sure I'm just, I'm, I'm going back, um, with the correct information as to a little bit of guidance if there was no action tonight, that's all I'm asking.
President Dillon.
Yeah, thank you. I think you hit the nail on the head. It is the bedroom count, with more bedrooms, uh, more cars.
Yeah.
It's, it's proven over and over, we've, we've seen it in many petitions in the past, that these apartments aren't gonna bring a lot of cars. Well, guess what? The parking on the street, we see it in North Woburn, on, um, townhouses that are closing for a million dollars and they have no place to park. So, that's why we're sensitive to it.
No, and I agree, Mr. President, I think, I just wanna make sure that I'm clear as to, you know, again, there was other concerns that really didn't have a relationship to the number of bedrooms that were raised by the public and I just want, you know, the committee to understand that, you know, they're not relatable things and I just wanna make sure, what am I going back to, to my client, that's all. So, if, if you don't mind, um, Yale Gatz is here with a little bit of, um, architectural background, who designed the building and kinda speak a little bit towards it now that we're in, uh, committee, if there is, uh, an action or so taken tonight, so...
I, I just wanna ask the committee, um, it's pretty, is it pretty clear that we'd like to see this be two bedrooms, yes?
That would be my...
I'm just taking a quick, around the table kind of idea. Yes, absolutely. So if that's the case, do we need to, we might need to be going back to the drawing board here and not seeing architectural plans, uh, I'm just, um, um, you're in construction, you're in construction, do we need to...
I, I don't think it hurts to have her speak on the mic.
That's all I wanna know.
Yeah, especially if it's a request, so...
Join us.
Thank you. Um, I would like to show you, of course, I can connect my computer somewhere so I can have a model. That, okay?
Probably. Um, well, can we have it on paper instead? Do you have paper copies? Gordon, Gordon has the cord.
The paper copies were supplied, that's what was submitted to, um...
Nightmare. Yeah, but why do we need to see it?
She wants to go through it with you.
I can, I can show you the 3D model, I can turn it around, I think it may, usually when I go in front of boards, I show them, it makes it easier to understand.
Sure. Make a motion for a five-minute recess, anybody? All in favor? Fine. Did you, I'm sorry, did you already give your name for the clerk?
Yeah, it's John, I'm Arden.
Okay, Gordon?
I will get it from the attorney. Yeah, we're good.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Um, just really quickly, usually I, we start the project by having me present, and when I explain how we get to what we get, it makes, you know, it, it, it makes things a little bit easier to understand what we're trying to do. We're definitely not trying to make something that's gonna, you know, if, if, there's so much opposition here. We're try, I'm trying to make something that's gonna look better, something that's gonna be nice when you, when you drive down the street and you see this building. My buildings tend to be nice and successful, okay? So we're not trying to make something that everybody is gonna oppose and hate, that's the first thing. So I just quickly wanna show, and we've, we've gone through so many iterations, you know, at this point, and, and changed the roofs and changed, and shrunk the building and changed the way it looks and, you know, the siding and, and, and things like this. We, we are trying to make this, you know, work for, for Sid and, and his company, but also, you know, my intention is to make it successful, you know, for, for whoever is gonna be there and, and for you, for the, for the rest of the town. Um, so quickly, just to show you around, let me just put the, the cars back on, um, let's go, I think the shade is off. Uh, just so you see how it, how it looks, this is the driveway leading to the back with the cars on the back, okay? And then there is the other driveway from the other side of the street with two, you know, the, the tandem spots. And yes, this is a non-conforming lot, it's much smaller than it needs to be presumed, so we cannot comply with everything that we, we wish we could, we cannot comply with the setbacks, we cannot comply with, uh, with the, both number of parking spots and the open spot space requirements, we had to prioritize, right? So we're changing this based on, on the feedback that we're getting from you, but, but there's no way that within this size of a lot, we can comply with all the requirements, that's why we're going through a special permit. Um, so I just want you to kinda see around. I wanna talk quickly about the basement. The basement, we proposed initially to finish it, we took out things out of it, at this point, the basement is not gonna be finished. The windows that you're referring to, the egress windows, every basement to code has to have two means of egress. I need some other ways, these are schematic drawings, okay? So I haven't, haven't even proposed, uh, the mechanical spaces where the sprinkler room is gonna be, it's not fully designed, but I know that I'm gonna have to have some way to get to these basements from outside besides the main stairs inside. So that's the, we're not trying to finish the basements, okay? So just to take that off the, off the table. Um, so, and I just want to give you a quick look around it, just so you understand what's, what, how does it look? There was a comment that I once got from one of the residents about the facade, preferring a, a flat facade with one, one type of siding, we're trying to articulate it in a way that it's not gonna feel so bulky. So we're breaking the facades in ways that, you know, come in and out as much as we can, you know, with the windows changing the siding to make it a little bit more human scale, so not one big mass of a building, which, you know, it, it is a big box, but break it in a way that we're, you're looking at different angles, it's gonna feel better, okay? Uh, that's the reasoning for, you know, for, for this kind of bump out of the windows. We changed the roof from, you know, we had different, you know, I can't remember at this point, I've been working on this for so long, but at this point, we got to a monstered roof with, with the small kind of, you know, um, doghouse doors to make it even more human scale, more appealing toward the street and toward the neighbors. Um, this would be the front, we would be, by, by, you know, putting the parking in the back and on the sides, we removed those spots that people are taking now in the front, which they're not supposed to, and we are having a better facade facing the street, so you don't just see the cars, you see a beautiful facade, you see some vegetation, yes, you're not gonna get to the fifty percent, you know, of, of open space, but, but it's a better visual for the street. And yes, the cars, you know, they're here and, and, agreed, it's not, it's not an ideal lot for, you know, for getting the, the cars here, but there is a way to make it work. Is it gonna be the most convenient? Probably not, you know, and whoever is gonna be living there is gonna consider that when they, you know, decide if they're, they're buying it or not, but, but it's possible, we can make it work, okay? Um, I just wanted to, kinda to, to give you the sense to, so, so you look at it, so you see that it, it, it is gonna be a nice building. We are trying to make something that's gonna be nice toward the neighborhood, definitely nicer than what's there now. That's, that's our intention, okay? Um, what else did I wanna speak about? Um, let me quickly...
Can it still look like that even if it's just two bedrooms?
Yes.
Okay.
But if it's just, if, if we agreed that in terms of the massing of the building, we already shrunk it back and we, we, we broken it a little bit, that it's pleasant and it's, it's, it's appropriate, you know, in terms of the size relative to its neighbors, you know, would, does it make sense to keep the same floor plates, the same size and just have huge bedrooms, rather than if I show you that I can conveniently put, you know, smaller bedrooms, not tiny, you know, appropriate bedroom size, but, but three, you know, for, for a family that will have, you know, two kids and then they want two separate bedrooms for the kids and, you know, a, a master in the attic? I think it's gonna give you different types of people wanting to live here. So if it's nicer buildings, you know, and it's a, a master suite on the, on the, on the attic floor and then two bedrooms that are appropriate for kids with the bathrooms there, it's gonna be a family with little kids. It's not, it's not, I, I don't know who lives there right now, but I feel like there is some kind of, uh, problem, right? So I feel like it's gonna bring different type of population that you do want to attract here and I don't, I don't, honestly, as an architect, I'm saying, I don't understand if it's the same size, the same mass of the building, does it really make sense? And, and, and the parking is based on, on the, on, you know, the zone, right? The, the two, two parking spots per unit, not per, per bed, right? It's a, we're not talking how many bedrooms. So, does it make sense to use the same floor plate, plate with huge bedrooms or can I just have the three bedrooms that I, I'm showing now with a, with a really nicely working, you know, layout?
Out of experience, we know that three bedrooms will have more cars from just experience, so that's why we're asking for the two bedrooms. Um, design-wise, yes, it, it might be very nice, but because of where it is, it's very congested in that area, that going with the two bedrooms, in my view, makes a lot more sense. And once again, it's because of the parking issue. Counselor de member.
My thing is, if you were to shrink it down to the two bedrooms, you could, in essence, shrink the building so that you have more area in the back or on the sides for parking. You don't necessarily have to have larger bedrooms, you could actually probably cut your construction costs by about twenty percent if you eliminated the bedrooms because now you're gonna downsize the whole outline of the building and you're gonna shrink the building, which will give you more space from the exterior, giving you more land area, more parking, so on and so forth. So in essence, you don't necessarily have to, and I know I said earlier, you could go with an open concept, but as you're going on and on and you're talking about this, I'm like, well then, don't make them a bigger bedroom, just shrink the overall size of the building and you're gonna save, again, on your construction costs and you're gonna have more, you know, area on the exterior of the building.
Agreed, but then the square footage obviously affects the price and affects who's gonna be there and the size of the unit.
At, at two bedrooms with a brand-new dwelling like that, you're gonna get top dollar, without a doubt.
Very likely you could get coupled with two kids in there, but just as likely you could get two roommates that are buddying up and renting, we see it all the time, especially where you're right downtown and you're on the, uh, bus route, not unlikely. So now you have, say, three friends that move in, all professional working, they're all gonna have at least one car. So just combat and what you said about the family could be, but it could be three professional people sharing one apartment as well, which could all be a car. We've seen that a lot lately.
I, I will just react, the way I designed this, I designed this thinking of families in my mind, right? So, so the, the open floor plan, that, that, you know, the island in the kitchen, you know, the, the way it's working, the second floor, you know, with the bedroom, the way, it, it just, it works really well for a family, for a young family, you know, with older kids obviously want more space, want, you know, it's a different...
I understand, I just wanted you to understand it could go the other way as well. Can you go back to the, uh, the outside drawing then? So when I look at this, it just feels like the, it's gonna be a recipe to, for disaster with those cars parked like that, right? And they're all small cars, the way I look at this picture. So it, it just feels, something just doesn't feel right when I look at that picture. It's a beautiful home, it's a significant upgrade of what's there, but when you look at the, where those cars are parked, especially in the back of that building, there's six cars there, that, that's gonna be a problem for the, the people that live there.
There's gonna be collision.
That, that's what jumps out at me when I see that, I'm not asking for a reaction to it, but, right, when I first look at that, it's significantly nicer than what's there.
Let me see if I have...
But just the way those cars stacked in there just feels like a problem.
I have his latest drawings, let me see what I have.
Tandem parking is always a problem.
Yeah, but they're not of, often stacked like that. I wouldn't want that at my own house between my wife and I in the house.
Oh.
Can you zoom in on the top left there?
In my house, all the kids...
The retaining wall?
Don't park behind me, don't park...
This far?
Uh, up top left.
This far?
Yep, the cross section there.
This, the engineer did this, so it's not real, I, I see the footing, he took it all in, 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 in our, you know, you see the footing is not centered here, it's all on, on the lot. So it's not going under yours.
It says property line, top and bottom of that pole, doesn't it?
Mm-hmm.
And he said the unbalanced fill would be my yard.
Man, you've got some good eyesight.
Yeah, I shouldn't have. All right, look, I'm on the same one as TV at home.
Oh, okay. I'm like, I have...
You can't see that from there?
No, I have to jump on the dust.
This, this is the retaining wall, this is the footing, this is the side of, of the lot that's here, right? You know, this is your side, this...
You're saying that's the left-hand side of the, uh, lawn, or...
Oh, you're saying, uh, this is your side, yeah.
Yeah, 'cause that footing has to go under the unbalanced fill.
Yeah.
Or for it to do anything, otherwise it's through the wall.
So, so yes, that's a lot.
That's a, hold on, that's a cross section, yes. So I'm not seeing, you're seeing the property line.
The dark one.
Right there at the top?
No, he's right, yeah.
Right at the bottom, so it's PL.
This, I mean, the engineer is not here, but I'm sure he can work out with you to, to fix that, so I, I, yeah, you're right.
Can I just, this sounds, now that I'm, I'm, I'm seeing this clearer now that it's a bit big, I, I'm actually thinking, why would you allow that?
Well, I won't lie, the current state of the property boundary isn't great. Um, and it's just what we inherited, we planted things to help maintain it, little as it is, um, but, uh, you know, the impact that this project would have on my property, my property, is substantial.
In a financial way, meaning that...
Financial, yes.
You mean to have it done or if it stays the way it is right now?
Uh, yeah, tired of curling balls in my yard and stuff like that, so, uh, yeah, I would like to see something done with the property, but, you know, it needs to be understood that you're talking about my land too here.
Is there any other questions for the architect?
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation, beautiful work. The building is beautiful.
Can I talk in my, my...
Yeah.
And I'll be darks and...
What, sir, please, please...
Yeah, that's true, I was just gonna...
At the time, yeah.
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, uh, would you...
I'm going to have, well, he's gonna step up and he's going to give his name and address, Gordon, as soon as you're ready.
Thank you.
Just one, one, one second, sir, okay? Let's, let's, no, have a seat, oh, God, please, have a seat.
Okay, one second.
Oh, yes, have a seat, have a seat. Gordon, let me know when you are ready.
I'm all set.
If you could state your name and address for our clerk, that would be great.
Sure, so my name is Sid Geller, uh, I'm from T-Tuck Group, I'm the owner of the existing building right now here. I heard all of you guys, I just wanna introduce myself so you don't see there's a guy or there's a developer who has no heart, you know? So we have done projects, small time, not, we are not big, you know, two-family, three-family, four-family, we've done in Metford, Melrose, Somerville, Cambridge, and again, like, somebody says inheritance, so this property, just to your, there was a comment that this was, property was left, dilapidated for over years, that was not me, that was the previous owner, um, we bought this property under foreclosure, and I agree with all of you guys, you know, whatever we do to this property is, it's, it's a bandage, you know, there's, the best thing is to, like you said, tear it down, make something nice. Um, and then whenever we go and do some projects in other towns in the city, this is new to us, this is first, um, typically the zoning board and all, we all, Yale are all, we always do, uh, meeting, this is just on us and, and we always try to get feedback, uh, from people and we always try to work, listen to you, everybody, you know? This town is new and we are learning and, you know, I remember when I approached Mark Savard, he, he was the one who started this thing, and then he said, oh, whatever changes, and he said, we gotta go. And when we were talking and Yale talked to Jim and Mark, they're like, yeah, we're talking, do this, do that, so the, the direct action, our comments was coming from the attorney's, and she was changing, okay, change the roof line, change this thing, change that, then Then it came with a question that, hey, parking is the big thing, parking is the big thing. How are we going to pack, right? So that's how, right now they're parking in the front. So, hey, change this thing, we don't. So all these comments, it's not that we didn't do, it seemed, it may seem like that we started coming now and now we are listening to you guys. But it's, we were at the backend and we were doing everything. This might seem like a, okay, you're showing, but there were a lot of iteration, there were a lot of comments which are coming. So we thought, oh, parking is the thing. But so she did a lot of the engineer, you know, the ton, and he made to make sure there's parking over there. So, so we did, we did all that until this point, right? Um, and, and, and this is not to say that we're not going to be working further. We, we listen again now. But my, my job here is to come and say that, and, and believe me, my, I have other properties and other property too. If we buy it, we go and guttary habit and make sure it's nice so that, you know, never, or, you know, they're always good, you know? This is the only one where, ew, what do I do? You know, I, I, I can't dump money, money into it because it's never going to get better. So this is the only option we got. Again, my point is just to tell you guys, you know, just to show you guys that we do good stuff all over the town, we want to do it over here too. We would work, we will go back to the drawing board, you know, two bedroom, eh, it's, you know, three bedroom rents and two bedroom rents are different. But if that's something I got to work on it, I'll work on it and we'll see, you know, our work and. Hey, not taking too much time, it's too late, but just want to introduce myself.
Counselor Camp, oh, I'm going to defer to President Dillon, you have the floor.
How long have you owned it? When did you buy it, a foreclosure, so how many years?
Uh, I twenty, 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 yeah, I twenty. Number, yes, yeah. But not, uh, like.
Four, five years, you're on.
Yeah, we won't let, let, you know, fall apart, that, that one, you know?
Four, five years.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
In my view, um, going back to two bedrooms and the parking issue is huge. Obviously the flooding is another, but it seems like what you've been doing or talking about doing might help alleviate that. But that parking is definitely an issue. I'm not quite su, I'm, I'm thinking if you're able to shrink the building a little bit, maybe you can solve the parking issue. Um, I just don't know too many people who actually will follow the tandem parking, which means they're going to be on the street. That, that, that's the, the, the thing. Or to have that many, I, it, it, you know, so I'm not sure how the design would work.
Yeah.
That's up to you. But for me, it's going to the two families and, uh, making sure that people can park uh, in, and in an easy way or semi-easy way, not quite so difficult as the tandem parking.
And I think the council has made that. And unless anyone has had a change of opinion, I'm taking a little poll here. I think the council has made it pretty clear.
A little bit, yeah, we get it.
And just one last comment, I think the design actually is very nice, but maybe it's too big. Maybe the building is.
Yeah, the existing building, what she designed right now, same the comment before, what we got, we already shrunk it from what, what structure the footprint is right now. What's the, if you can tell them what is right now and what we are proposing for some days right now, they know we already shrunk it, you know?
And I'm not sure, but this is the first time we're meeting you, correct? Is it, I don't, unless I missed it, because I did have a hip, I did have a hip replacement.
He's been here a couple, he's been here at all public hearings and he was here at a committee meeting.
But never spoke, you know?
Because when I, when I heard, I was like, I, I got to introduce myself.
No, and I thank you very much, but I feel like you cleared up a few things for me, so thank you.
Yeah.
So just two minutes, ma'am, you have the floor for two minutes and then we're going to, we're going to wrap things up.
Yeah, it's, it's just here, uh, the footprint of the existing building, I have two, uh, two thousand three hundred and fifty-nine. Um, the proposed building, I have two thousand sixty-three. And with this, without the porches and then with those porches, you see this on the entry porches, which I need, I get to two hundred, eh, eh, two thousand three hundred and seventeen. Okay, so, so I'm even a little bit less because here the existing building, you see the footprint of the existing building has this kind of courtyard here that is unused. Eh, it's kind of like a, like a U shape. So we, we're taking, you know, eh, eh, advantage of this and then squeezing it from the side. And then this is the, the new one that we proposed. So the, the front, we placed it right at the front in the same spot to get more space in the back. But you see, we gained that much in the back and we managed to squeeze it from the sides as well because of, you know, this part that we're taking advantage.
Okay. I'm going to, um, defer to President Dillon. What, how would you like the committee to proceed tonight?
Well, let's talk to the attorney.
Yeah, I mean, I think we had, um, thank you. I'm going, thank you.
Thank you very much, sir, for introducing yourself.
I think we had a good working meeting, which is, which is obviously the reason why we wanted to come here. Um, so I, I think if, if the, um, I, I think, I think, although I came at the beginning, I'll backtrack and say, I think it's probably leaving a committee with no action and then maybe let's go back to the drawing board, submit something, uh, if my client agrees. And then, uh, maybe, you know, we'll, we probably can't get on, obviously April 1st is the next public hearing, so we'll have to push that off. But, um, maybe another committee meeting.
Yeah, I think we could, if, I think we could leave it in committee and meet on April 7th, Monday, April 7th. Would that give you folks enough time?
Enough time, April 7th?
Not really, sorry.
Yeah, well, I just have a, a question perhaps, uh, through, somebody might. If the plans change that substantially and we're all talking two bedrooms, we, you heard that, yes?
Yes.
Heard that, yes? Okay. Um, does it require refiling is what I would like to know. Perhaps I'll pose that question to Lindsay and we'll leave it in committee for now. But just as long as the message was heard. Um, and I, sorry, my back is still, but two bedrooms, we're asking them to come back.